I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 3, 2023, to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone for public comment and announcement?
Good evening. David Blankfire, Chief. Received a letter this afternoon from the Baker-Polito Administration. The Fire Department, for several years, it's available to all departments statewide, runs a senior safe and a safe grant. The senior safe we use for, with the Council on Aging, do smoke detectors and home inspections. And the safe program is for the education, kids at school, programs of that nature. So, we received $3,800 for the student awareness, the safe grant, and then another $2,000 for the senior safe. So, just want to make everybody aware of that.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Captain Smith. Captain Leanne Smith is the one that runs the program. And it's a program, it's performance-based, so if we don't use all the money in one year, they take it away the next. So, we continue to keep getting the award. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director, and I just wanted to announce that our events for last year, we did a drumming circle, and there were over 85 people in attendance, of all ages. It was phenomenal, which made us think that maybe we should do some more programming. So, we're going to try the Great Gift Exchange. It is not a commercial for Dawn. It's like a large Yankee swap that we're trying. So, if you've got a gift for Hanukkah, or Christmas, or your birthday, that's just not you. Wrap it up. Come on in on January 10 at 6:00 p.m., and it's going to be a large Yankee swap. I'm trying to break the record, not going to tell you how many that is, but I'll need all of you in attendance. That's at 6:00 p.m., and refreshments will be served. The next night, we are having our free bicycle information session. We have a woman who's coming in to give some safety and skills training on your bikes. That's at the community center on January 11 at 5:30. Then, we're doing the Tea With Me program. That will be on January 13 at 11:30. Just drop in and tell us any ideas that you have. And we're going to give a teaser that we have quite a few programs, because February is the community center's birthday, as you all know. So, we have several different events. There are ducks involved. They won't be hidden around town, but they'll be ducks involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kara Moeney, Director of Cultural Affairs, giving you a program update. We are excited to kick off our programs for 2023. So, we have our Stitchology Sewing School for Kids is kicking off this January, so they have open enrollment, and they're also taking interest for adult programs. And then, we have Bernie at Waystack, who's offering two primer series. Actually, both are at capacity right now, scheduled to start this week, but we're taking interest on the waitlist. We have her also doing a January 21 Provincetown Print Workshop. And then, we have Taylor Fox, who's offering two portrait groups on Tuesday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30, and Thursday, 9 to 12. And then, we have our next public art show on Saturday, January 14. All are welcome to join us for opening reception from 3 to 5. In February, we're introducing a quilting and more, running two sessions. And then, we have Seaside Marketplace is accepting applications for summer 2023, and we are taking rolling instructor proposals for all of 2023 programming. So, we're off to a good start.
Where do you advertise these programs?
We are advertising on 204 System.com, the town's website, social media, any press release that will hit the paper, and then, word of mouth.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Mary, go ahead.
Kara, do you have that on Facebook, where if you posted it, we could then share it?
Yes.
You do? Okay. I will watch. Thank you.
Noreen?
Noreen Donahue, headwaters, speaking on my own behalf, not representing any board or committee. Happy New Year. And for the new year, I see many budget factors coming forward, as promised, much earlier than in recent years, which provides a tremendous opportunity for discussion. So, thanks to everyone for your hard work, especially to Joe. You know, the chair has reminded us that we elect the board, and the board appoints the TA, so we should trust the opinions and recommendations that ensue. I fully agree with that sentiment, and would include valuing the guidance of all of our town staff. And I think their recommendations can only be enhanced by dialogue with the taxpayers. So, here goes. This is a very large font, so don't get nervous. Very large. This year, we received a cost savings from Monomoy, which when coupled with an assessment adjustment from Cape Cod Tech, totaled about $900,000 in savings. In addition to that, our free cash has been certified at almost $7.5 million. For context, it is the highest free cash amount we have ever received, probably benefiting from some very high local receipts during the past year. In the past, the town had managed to operate for many years with a free cash allotment in the neighborhood of $1.5 million to $4 million. So, I feel we should think out of the box and perhaps consider some different types of projects to support with this windfall. The first I would put forward is to support Board Member Kavanaugh's recent suggestion that we pursue some programs for preschool ed or early childhood education in some form. Just my humble opinion, but I think it's one of the best ways to help the community as a whole, is the ramifications of this financial support across many resident groups. Plus, the state has some programs we could pursue under its Early Education and CARES grant. Second, it's above my pay grade, but I understand there may be some complications or impediments in our efforts toward producing some workforce housing. These free cash funds could be used to grant some seed money earmarked for workforce housing, which would undoubtedly be useful in the very near future. And last, but certainly not least, there is the taxpayer. During those many years of low free cash, as opposed to this year's $7.5 million, some years were $400,000, some $1.5 million, and one year was even over $100,000 negative. It was the taxpayer who made up the difference during those very lean years. Last year, there was some discussion related to the savings from the schools as possibly using those savings as relief towards tax burdens. Perhaps this could be the year that we actually stay under a 2.5% increase and have a lower amount to raise. In closing, I'll just say, there's never going to be a more golden opportunity to act on benevolent projects like these. Thanks for your time and listening.
Thank you, Noreen. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Joe? Oh, Mary, you have a statement?
I don't have the list of committee openings, but I'd just like to encourage anyone, if there's any committee that you're interested in, maybe I do have the list. But even the ones I don't read will have openings at some point, so if there's any committee, go to the town website and fill out the form. Right now, what we're looking for is agricultural, capital outlay, community center facility, conservation, forest, golf, Harwich Culture, Harwich Energy and Climate Action, Housing Committee, historic, planning, real estate and open space, treasure chest, voter information, youth services, and zoning board of appeals. I really ask everyone to think about it. If you're sitting at home and you sometimes shout at the TV, like I used to, this is your chance to get on a committee and change some of the things that you perhaps don't like. So, I'd ask everyone to give it a thought.
Thank you, Mary. Joe? Oh, Dawn?
Please don't shout at the committee members.
No, just the TV.
Okay.
All right. Now, Joe, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and members of the board and everyone assembled. Happy New Year. On behalf of our housing advocate, Brianna Nickerson, I just wanted to let the general public know that Brianna is now offering office hours. The information will be provided on the town's website under Housing Advocacy. But the statement she has written is, "The intention of office hours is to assist individuals looking for resources regarding housing. This includes programs for rental or moving assistance, rental arrears, assistance with rental assistance of families in transition, or raft applications already in progress, homeowners' assistance resources, and homeowners' assistance funds, and many other housing-related concerns and questions." So, the office hours, again, this will be posted on the website, but on Tuesdays between 2:30 and 4:00, she's available at 204 System Road. And on Fridays, from 11 to noon, she's available at Town Hall in the Administration Department. Again, more information will be online. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. Last, from the board, we will resume weekly meetings. So, next week, January 9, we will have a meeting at 6:00 p.m. Consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to approve the Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes for 12:00, 12:22.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Julie?
I just noticed, and I'm trying to find it now, I thought I jotted it down, there's a comment in here that says that you said that the Maslin property was zoned for commercial, which you did not. So, I just think we need to make that correction.
Thank you. Joe, you got that? Any further comments?
Who's second?
I did.
Larry.
Larry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, vote to use $3,400 of opiate settlement funds to support the Save a Life Tour, S-A-L-T. We do have Sheila online. I believe this request came from you, Sheila. Do you want to talk about this? Technical difficulties. Caleb, any thoughts on this, or is just unmute the mic?
Well, while we're waiting for Sheila, I would certainly comment, this seems like a tremendous program.
Yeah.
It's so in-depth, I looked at a little of it, it's, I presume they'll pick and choose, because there's so much there, but it's, you know, what a great job putting it together. I hope Sheila can say something, but we need to support this.
Thank you, Larry. Dawn?
Agree.
Mary?
I agree with Larry. I read it and thought it was fantastic.
Julie?
Same. I totally would support it.
My only question, which I don't think Sheila's going to be able to answer, but we, this program has been here before, and it's always been funded through a grant. So, I'm wondering if we applied for the same grant and didn't get it, or we're just assuming that we can use these funds before the committee comes back, or the working group, not committee, comes back with recommendations, because I believe a lot of people want a piece of this money. And then, also, the human services grants for the town of Harwich, that's something that every year we go out, we don't seem to use those specifically for Harwich programs. That would seem like a no-brainer. But this is a small pool of money, and this is actually a small ask, so I'll support it. But if we've been getting grants, I would encourage the director to continue to try and get grants. Sheila, I don't think we're going to get you, but it sounds like you have full support. Thank you for being on the call. Can I get a motion?
I move we vote to use the $3,400 opioid settlement funds to support the Save a Life Tour.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Only that, even though we, well, I assume we'll vote positively for this, it does not prevent us from looking at other funds going forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Next up, Brad. Approved sustainable fishery management plan for Herring River Harvest at the Herring River in Harwich. Brad?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Chase. I work for the State Division of Marine Fisheries, and I'm here to take questions and describe the status of the, your herring harvest plan. It was approved by the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission in November. I was here last in August to present the plan. It was put together between our division and your Department of Natural Resources. So, congratulations, you have a plan. You can have a harvest of herring in Herring River if you would like. There's a couple steps I should discuss going forward, but really, it's a town decision at this point, if you want to manage a harvest in 2023. The state would need to change its regulations. Right now, the regulations say there can be no harvest or possession during spring spawning runs. It'd be a simple change to say, if you have an approved plan, you're good to go. But we would need a little time to make that happen. Secondly, there should be some coordination between local law enforcement, state law enforcement, and town departments on how to manage the harvest over at Bell's Neck. And then, I think, really, it's a matter of the town getting together a permit system and a management system. So, it's really up to the town to decide what you would like to do. There has been no harvest in Massachusetts since 2005. It's been a while. There's one of the locations approved in Middleborough Lakeville, the Damascus River, and they've chosen not to have a harvest yet. But I think it's a credit to the town that you're poised to have a harvest if you'd like to. So, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Brad. You had a recommendation in the original email. Can you share with the board what your recommendation was for this year?
Yeah, the, we have a spawning run count at the Bell's Neck Herring Run, and so, what the plan does, it allows 10% of the time series mean of that count, which is 57,000 fish, which can be taken over a five-week season. It allows 600 permits. You can't exclude out-of-towners, because it's a state resource, so the recommendations have a four-to-one ratio of local residents to out-of-town residents. And so, that was the recommendation that was approved, and so, you could run with that. There has been a downturn in the run the last two years. From 2018, 19, and 20, it was the top run in the state. It reached over a million fish. It's come down since then. So, you could choose to have a lower catch. You wouldn't have to take the 10% of the time series mean if you didn't want to. And so, it's really a question of whether the town wants to manage this for this coming spring. And the state recommendation stands to support the approved plan and support whatever the town wants to do.
Thank you, Brad. Larry?
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Brad. I guess I'm a little confused. I thought we'd gone ahead with your recommendation that Michael referred to a few weeks ago, but that was just information, that was just information, it's all I can take in, I lost track of it.
I emailed the recommendation to each board member and said, "Don't talk about it till tonight." So, that was his recommendation, but...
So, I didn't talk about it. Give me that, please.
It was a state, it was a letter from the director of the Division of Marine Fisheries saying, "Okay, you're approved, you know, here's the specifications, and let's talk if you want to have a presentation." I did prepare a presentation, but I think, you know...
I'm okay. I just got confused about reading it before and thought we'd moved on. I think it's a great plan. I don't see why we don't move ahead with it. There's a lot of work on into it. The state driven, which is always beneficial, so...
Yep.
Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hate to date myself, but I was, I am the only one here who was here when we closed the run, and the state didn't want us to. But there were reasons for doing that, and I'm data-driven too, Larry. In pondering this, I'm a little concerned about the downtrend, and I'm not certain that I would support the original plan, given that, because the trend doesn't seem to be our friend at the moment. So, I don't know what the number is, or I don't even know if we do it, but I'm open to alternatives other than the 10%.
Yeah. Well, that's the maximum allowed by the plan, and so, the town could choose to have a one-week opening. The town could have a single day to celebrate the fish and have one day of harvest. It's really up to the town. You just cannot exceed that maximum allowance. And it is concerning. I mean, there were 800,000 fish in the run three years ago. It went to about 490, and this past year was 291,000. Of course, the reproductive potential of 300,000 fish is enormous. So, I'm not as concerned. I think these runs fluctuate. It's natural, and I think when we were at 800,000, 1.2 million, it was extraordinary. And so, it's clearly a choice of the town, how you want to handle this, if you want to have a smaller opening. I think it would be a little bit too soon to seek that 10%, 57,000 fish in 2023.
And just for the record, I do have the email, and it was from Heinz, not yourself.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion. 2022, we had 292,000. 2021, it was 436,000. And Heinz's recommendation, "The prudent approach is to wait at least one more year," is what he recommended to the board. Mary?
I shared Dawn's concerns about the numbers going down, but I'd certainly be open to your suggestion that maybe we just open it for a day or for a week. My only other question is to Joe, are we set up to manage this?
Well, I think the quick answer is, it depends on what the program would be. I do think it's fair to say that Heinz might be able to rely upon his network of volunteers for a one-day program, but it really depends on what we're looking to do and when we're looking to do it.
Okay.
Julie?
So, and I agree. I mean, obviously, management and time, and if we were to do a day or a week or whatever, what's the, do they still need a permit? So, you know, not only monitoring, but permits?
That'd be the choice of the town.
Okay. So, we don't have to issue a permit? We could do a one-day?
Could have a cultural event just to recognize the importance of the herring run. And I think, you know, as someone who lives in town, I've been around Bell's Neck for a long time, I think there's a constituency that would appreciate some access to these fish. It's been a long time. So, I, you know, taking off my state hat, I think it would be a good idea to not wait too long before something happens.
And the director of Cultural Affairs in the back row is shaking her head up and down. She thinks it would be a good idea.
No, I think it's a great idea, and to celebrate it, I agree. I mean, you know, it'd be nice to wait a year, as Heinz says, but if we could do a short-term thing to acknowledge the success, I think that would be good.
So, maybe I'll bring this back next week for a vote with a proposed plan.
Yeah, if I can, I'd just like to clarify, though, because what the recommendation is to do is to, basically, to give the town the responsibility to manage the Herring River. So, if we vote on that, then we have some flexibility on the items that's been discussed. So, it's really a vote to, not to go with the full details, all the details of the plan, but the detail, but to put it back into our court. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's permission given for the town to harvest this resource if you choose.
So, Larry, that part's already been decided. We do have control.
Okay.
So, that piece of it, we already have control. We just now have to pick how we want to manage it. So, you were right on that part.
The recommendation that you were thinking of came from Heinz Proft and not myself. Our recommendation, support what the town wants to do.
Bring it back next week?
Yeah.
Dawn?
Yeah.
Larry?
Yeah, just one question, because I'm okay with bringing it back. I just don't know how much we want, I know I'm not qualified to develop the plan that you and Heinz are developing. I don't know how much detail I'm comfortable getting into, maybe broad scope of what we can do, but...
My intent would be to reach out to Heinz, tell him the scenarios that Brad ran by us, the one day or a one week, but definitely keeping in mind the decline, not doing the full allotment.
And throwing it back to the experts to then go forward.
Yeah. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Next up, vote to approve the permit renewal for the mooring servicing agents for the calendar year 2023. These are three-year contracts, but we are required to vote them every year. Anyone want to make a motion or have conversation first?
I'll make a motion. Oh, do you want to discuss?
No, go ahead. I'm just...
I move that we vote to approve the permit renewal for the mooring servicing agents for the calendar year 2023.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind the public that, because they often get confused on this, we are not awarding a contract to these people, that they, no one owns those fields. The state owns the underlying water, and what we're doing is licensing people to deploy moorings on behalf of the town and collect mooring fees on behalf of the town. So, we are not ceding property to them as a lease of some sort.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on Chatham Road and Route 39 intersection recommendations of the...
Skip D.
D. Vote to appoint John Rendon to the Barnstable County Dredge Subcommittee for the three-year term, January 1, '23, to December 31, '25.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, on to E. Discussion on Chatham Road and Route 39 intersection recommendations of the traffic safety. This was brought up to me a few weeks ago. I did speak to the town administrator. I'm going to let Joe add some details to it, but this was a recommendation back in 2018, and that's Chatham Road and Route 39, where you pull up to the end of that road and you look hard right around the hedge. By the time you turn your head back, somebody coming from the other way, so that's why they named it the Hope and Go. I think both chiefs are here tonight, and both chiefs can attest that we've had several accidents there, including an ambulance not long ago. So, the thought to bring this forward tonight is, Joe had said that this was originally sent to him as a capital request...
Correct.
...to go on the capital plan. Due to public safety, I don't know why we would have to put it on the capital plan rather than make it a mission of the DPW and put it in their budget. The conversation notes that we have, the view of it, it wouldn't be very expensive, and the owner of the property was amenable back then to give us a piece of the land to make this happen. Joe?
You've pretty much said all of it, Mr. Chairman. My understanding is that it was originally contemplated to be a capital item for road improvements. The capital request did not come forward, so at this point, it would be a conversation with property owners and council to execute the proper documents, and then say what DPW would need to actually then do that work as imagined.
My feeling is, if we can spread T-base on Bell's Neck Road to make it a more comfortable ride, we certainly could pay for this intersection to avoid accidents. Larry, comments?
No, I fully agree.
Dawn?
I agree.
Mary?
I'm fine if it's that little work. Let's do it.
I agree. Yeah.
Do you need a vote or anything, Joe?
No.
Okay. Noreen?
Certainly, traffic is not my wheelhouse, but I did hear some conversations over the last couple of years about, you know, before we decided to go ahead and, you know, do some construction and changes, that we just try some signage, block off the end of Chatham Road, put some signage to turn right on Lover's Lane, and try it for two years and see what happens. And everybody can turn on Lover's Lane, the way most of us already do. So, I just want to throw that out there. I've heard it talked about before we started digging up road.
Thank you, Noreen.
Good evening. Happy New Year, all. My name is Jerry Beltis. I'm a member of the Traffic Safety Committee. Linda was supposed to be here tonight. Evidently, she forgot or had some other business. A little bit of the history on this is that I was one of the prime movers to get this going. I was in the office when Link called the property owners. They live in La Jolla, California. Initially, they were willing to secede some of the property to the town, then they called back, and they were hoping that they could get some money for it. There's a couple of ways the town can do that. They can do eminent domain, and the property is lost to them, and they can't use it. The other way is to do an easement, permanent easement. They would get funds for that. They would not lose the rights to the property, so if they wanted to put an addition on their house, and it needed that square footage of land, they wouldn't do it. They wouldn't have any problems. The road, doing what the previous speaker was thinking about, was making that a one-way, and then going up onto Lover's Lane, was looked at by one of the police officers who's involved with traffic. It's problematic with the sightlines on 39 and Lover's Lane, and there's taking into consideration for large trucks, legal truck over the road, largest is 53 feet. Turning on to Route 39 from Lover's Lane would be difficult for them. It's not practical to try and have the traffic detoured up on Lover's Lane. It's not fair that a neighbor's up there to put up with something that's being done that needs to be fixed down below. As I was speaking to Link earlier, he said that he was requested to have it put on the Capital Outlay Committee. He came up with the funds, the figures for the funds, and Linda and I both thought it was going to be on the Capital Committee, Capital Outlay Plan. So, that's where it lies now, is that was just put there. If it gets done, put it before the voters this year, and in a couple of years, hopefully it will be a safer intersection.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm not sure that there's, the only way to accomplish this is capital outlay, and that's what the town administrator's gonna look into. And then Joe had just asked that we speak to the police chief and the traffic safety unit to confirm what Jerry just said.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Boris Lekman. I'm speaking as a Art Bowden, 800 Orleans Road, right across the street. Okay? I lived through it for the last 20 years, every day, the traffic. And it's not such much of a problem during the winter because your windows are closed and you don't hear the FUs all day long. Okay? At, at that particular point. And I guess I came here tonight with some sort of false pretense. I thought there was already a plan in motion, because I went to that meeting back in 2018, right after wife and I in the car, making a left-hand turn into our own driveway, were rear-ended and sent my wife back to the hospital to repair her back after she just had a back operation. Okay? Luckily, she's okay now, and, but, but it could have turned out a different way. And so, I thought there was already a plan in motion, and I was just gonna make a comment about it. Whatever you do, it, it'll be great. But one of the things that needs to be done, and I'll, I'll turn to the gentleman behind me, I'm police officers, and maybe none of them know, but I've made a few comments. And I'll have to say that when I call the police department, they do respond, and they come out and they do, they do respond, and something does happen, but it doesn't go on forever. You have to slow the traffic down. If you don't slow the traffic down, I don't care what you do there, it ain't gonna solve the problem, you know? And, and I know no one wants to hear this, but the dump trucks, and I won't name the names on the side of the dump trucks, but that when they roar through there, you, even these fine gentlemen in blue don't get up and tell them to stop, because they're just, they're coming through at, at the speed they want to go. You have to slow the traffic down. And, and hopefully it will happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mine was quick. Dan Pelletier, Water Waste Water Superintendent. Just as this plan comes to fruition, we do have some pipe discontinuity in that area. So, depending on what and where the impact would be, we may try to piggyback on, upgrade some water main stuff, so.
Thank you, Dan. This will be back as well. Board members, any comments?
I'd just like to turn pipe discontinuity.
What's that, Don?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. This is kind of the quintessential intersection problem of the northeast, a lot of upstate New York, lot of off-Cape, Passusus. But most of the ones that I've seen over the last 10 or 15 years have been addressed. This thing i- is festering, and it really is a problem when something comes at a 45-degree angle and there's no possibility. I mean, the trucks basically try to block a lane so that they can buy some time to make the full turn, but that's not a solution either.
Thank you, Don. Any further? All set? Okay, next up is to vote to approve the temporary closure of Ember Pizza, Inc., DBA Ember, 600 Route 28.
I move that we vote to approve closure from January 4th to the 24th for minor renovations, cleaning and upkeep for the Ember at 600 Route 28 in Harwichport.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any comments? The only comment I would make, and I did share it with licensing today, so they can reach out, they sent a letter to inform us that they're going to, rather than ask if they can. As far as, as long as I've been on the board, we've never not approved one, but the process is to ask for the vote, not to tell us that they're, that they're doing it. All right, can I get a motion on G?
Do we vote?
Mr. Chairman, there was no.
We might want to vote for that.
No vote on F?
Oh, thank you. Rushing through it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Now I'll take a motion on G.
Vote to, oh, do you want me to, do you want me to read it?
Go ahead.
Move, I vote, uh, move that we vote to approve a special permit application for one-day entertainment and one-day wines and malt for Crossrip Gallery, January 14th, 2023, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 204 Sisson Road.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. I'm gonna take a motion on H, 1 through 3. I'm gonna take 4 up, so.
Sure. I move that we vote to approve the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee. One, Kenneth Dixon, Board of Appeals, alternate member, term to expire June 30th, 2024. Two, Mark Martello, Golf Committee, full member, term to expire June 30th, 2023. Three, Sophia Pilling, Conservation Commission, alternate member, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a motion on number 4, H4.
I move that we vote to approve the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee, number 4, Arthur Bowden, Harwich Housing Committee, full member, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've known Art for a lot of years, and I'm definitely gonna vote for him, but I've known, I, I don't think his passion for affordable housing is surpassed by anybody. So, I just want to make one comment, and Art and I have talked about this in the past, is getting on that committee, it's really important to act as a committee and have everybody involved. And I know you had that discussion, but I wanted to make sure that that came out to the public, that the expectation is that everybody has a, a strength, and you need to play off of those strengths and work within the committee structure for it to be successful.
Thank you, Don. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Updated list of miscellaneous committee appointments is in the packet. Don?
You, you arguing the appointment?
No, I'm not gonna argue. Uh, uh, thank you for the appointment.
You're very welcome. And thank you for volunteering.
And, uh, I will play nice in the sandbox with everybody. I didn't use those words, Art. I'm heartened. I just want, I have to say a few words. I'm heartened. I, I thought I was gonna be the only one here wearing a hat that said, said housing on it, but it was a comment made about housing. So, I think at every board meeting, there should be somebody of us in the audience that's just gonna hold everybody's feet to the fire. Housing is important in town. And, and I'm, when I say, and it doesn't, we don't need a lot of numbers, but if we have one or two just shouting housing all the time, sooner or later, someone's gonna get the idea, damn it, we have to, pardon the expression, we have to do something. And, and that's what I want to do. I want to do something. Thank you for your vote. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Don't forget Richard. That's two, not one.
Wow, and the five of us. Updated list of miscellaneous committee appointments. Don, you asked for that? Is that what you were looking for?
Exactly, because that was the area that fell off the grid. That's not within the town or jurisdiction. That has something to do with who forms, what expectation for what term, and who do they report to, and when does it expire. So, Ellen did that as one of her last things, and I really appreciated it.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Larry?
None.
Julie?
None.
Mary?
No, all set.
All set. Thank you. All right. Annual report from the Community Center Facilities Committee, that is in the packet. I do not believe anyone from the Facilities Committee is here to present that report. They are not. Is there any questions? It was a very detailed report, and it's surely done an awful lot of work. Larry, comments?
We can emphasize the detail and all the work they've done. They, uh, they do, uh, they do more each year, to the benefit of the town, so my hat's off, Joe.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the time it was built, it was the first of its kind, really, in this area, and they've done a really nice job of fleshing out activities for the public, so for those people who didn't think we needed one, most of them are complaining that it's not operating enough. So, it, it's, thanks for all their work.
Mary?
No, I've just been very impressed with that committee and the community center as a whole.
Julie?
I agree. I mean, they do a great job, and the, the fitness, the, the activity that the fitness room gets is amazing, and then the additional assistance that we'll let it give. So, I think it's such a great thought. So, thank you for all the hard work.
All right, next up, old business. Board discussion on 204 Sisson Road. Votes may be taken. Last meeting, we discussed the recommendations, I'll call them, from the Finance Committee that was sent in a fairly detailed packet to the board, and asked you all to review those and see if there's anything that you wanted to, any suggestions you wanted to take or not. We'll start with Julie.
You're in the hot seat, Julie.
Well, I, first of all, have said multiple times that I'm impressed at what our 204 Sisson Road has become and the cultural designations that we've received. So, I don't really see a lot of change necessary. I mean, I'm welc-, I'm willing to listen to any specific change anyone is proposing, but ultimately, right now, I like where we're going, and I think the only other purpose we talked about was some municipal use, and, and I would see that as a positive, but I would think that the board would vet that, how we would go about, you know, where we would use those spaces, what they would be used for, and to keep them completely separate, because I wouldn't want them to be impacted, have an impact on the cultural aspect of it, because I think it's phenomenal.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
I'm with Julie on this. I think we've got a good thing going. We've got an excellent director that we just brought in, and I think we ought to leave her alone to manage this building along with Joe. It's, it is a municipal building. I don't understand, as I, I used Mr. Hughes's words the last time, I'm perplexed and flummoxed as to what the whole big hullabaloo is about 204 Sisson. It's one of our buildings. Does this building have a strategic plan? Does the library have a strateg-, so why should 204 Sisson have a strategic plan? I don't get it. I think we leave Kara alone. What she's done in, I don't know, not too many months, has been pretty, five, thank you, has been pretty amazing. I know she's had some preliminary, preliminary conversations with the Payamet Center, who loves to have space to use in the off-season, because they've got a tent. That would be a real moneymaker. It's a great spot. It's way more central than the places they use in Wellfleet and Truro, I think, with way more capacity. I think we leave Kara alone and let her take this to the next level.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I largely agree with my colleagues here, and at the risk of having, being shot from the audience, there is still some concern on my part. I mean, I've taken mass cultural council courses because of charitable, but I don't know how it went, about capacity building. The, the biggest sin in any of the modules is build it, and they will come, is not really the way you're supposed to plan. You're supposed to plan based on, almost like a factory. If you're running three shifts, then you know for a fact that you need to build another building to start war shifts. Insofar as we've got a floor plan that shows mixed use that we never saw before this year, and the auditorium by itself is, is just about a half a million dollars, I'd like to get a better idea of exactly who's going to be occupying what and for what purpose. And this, I, I'm sure that you guys got the emails too, but the stakeholders there, I would have expected to be far more involved in the layout and the occupation. Sounds like they're marching on the building. But the, the ability to occupy space within the building, and that's a discussion that can't just come from us, as a central authority. My apologies to Joe, but it's not an administrative function. It's really based on who's gonna use what for what. And you don't spend money on things that you haven't got a plan about how you're gonna use them. And I would disagree about a central premise. Before we built, rebuilt this building, before we built the high school, before we built anything, we visioned what we were going to do, and we actually decided what was going to be in the building. We didn't just say, here's like $30 million, build a building, and come back to me and let me know what you're gonna do to fill it. You, you really have to have some sort of idea about how the floor plan is laid out and who the stakeholders are gonna be in what areas. And particularly the auditorium, I think it was a legitimate concern to raise. It was like, what are we doing with it? I know what could be done with it, but what are we gonna do with it?
Before I go to Larry, Joe, do you want to respond to that? And what I mean by respond to, and, and maybe Kara is, what are we gonna do with the auditorium? It seems like a reasonable question.
So, you asked if I wanted to respond. Can I still answer that question?
No.
Thank you for the clarity. My statement, I, I've tried to be consistent in my statements. The auditorium is no different than other rooms of the similar size that we have throughout town, whether it be a little bit smaller at the library, a little bit different use at the community center. So, it's an auditorium space that can be used for auditorium purposes in a municipal building.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up? Just to follow up on some of the comments about, you know, the auditorium and the space, et cetera, I would go back to what Mary said, and I neglected to say about our new director, Kara, is that, you know, as she looks for opportunities, some of what may need to be done in those rooms could, could shift, could change, but, but we're not gonna know that until we give her the opportunity to continue to work on bringing in various possibilities. So, I mean, understanding that what's in front of us in terms of expenses, some of which we just know flat out have to be done, but we could find out that the proposed auditorium that, you know, fix that we see right now might change, and, you know, it may bend, whatever. So, I, I think it goes back to empowering the person we hired to continue to try to do her, her job, which has only been five months in the making, so.
And I would expand that to the town administrator that we hired to do a job, and that's to run our buildings, and the other department heads that are involved in that building. Empower them to do their jobs. Kara, would you expand on your thoughts to select Menhowell for the use of the auditorium?
Yes, so.
Clearly, you've done this before.
Time or two. Yeah. So, it's, when you're working with a mixed-use municipal building, you work it on a contract basis where you seek people to rent your space to do various productions. So, one person we're also talking to, I just had a site visit with over the weekend, was Miss Cape Cod. So, it's a scholarship program, obviously, for regional, up to a national level. I also worked with Miss Massachusetts in Plymouth, so it's now just our regional effort of that. But the idea is, obviously, what we're seeking as far as the upgrades go that everyone keeps talking about, these are your basic upgrades that will accommodate everybody. And that, no, it's not satisfying every single renter that's gonna come in, but the larger shows you deal with, they bring their own equipment anyways. So, this is to give it the appeal that you need to get Payamet in the door, to get people in the door to maximize on our capacity level. So, you build a rental structure, just like we currently have, but now we get to raise our rates a little bit more because things are upgraded, and we build the idea that this is a space that you can come, whether it's the Junior Theater, expanding operations, and coming to do a certain showcase with us. It could be the various cultural programming that we're gonna offer, so it could be bands, it could be comedy shows, anything, open-mic nights, coffee houses, you name it. The idea is to use it as a mixed-use space and invite the world, essentially, to come in and rent our facility, and that's where my job comes in, to market it to them and say, this is our space, come check out, this is why we're so awesome, and fill the calendar with events. So, that's the idea, and that's much like any of the other programming spaces throughout the building.
When we first embarked on this in 2016, we did a fair amount of investigation on what else, else is out there in the marketplace, and there really isn't anything.
There's not much. You know, there really isn't. And everyone is, on the average, of either they're around 200 to 300 seats, some are 500 seats, and then you have the tents that are seasonal, and they're 2,000. So, they appeal. But Payamet has the interest of wanting to take those national and regional acts, bring them to us in their off-season, which is huge. You would not get that seasonally here on, this far down on the Cape. There's just no, no possible way. Your January through March is your hardest times to program, but we have someone that's a big name with a huge reach, that's willing to come to the table.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Don, anymore?
Still where I was about just the auditorium, because it's, it's not an auditorium anyway. It's a cafeterium. And are we going to continue that as a mixed-use, or are we going to bust it out and make it more of an auditorium?
So, the idea was to utilize the space as a multipurpose cafeterium. So, you have the auditorium, which is 220 fixed seats. So, even if a seating project got done, you still maintain that, but now you're ADA compliant. If you're able to open the wall, then you get to maximize seating capacity. So, not only in a theater perspective, but you also get in the perspective of being able to do round tables. You get that comedy club feel, but you also can open it up to a variety of different events, to really appeal to what it is. But the fine-tuned piece is, you can also run two events at the same time. If I have to rent out just the auditorium, say someone's running a rehearsal, and then I rent out the cafeteria for maybe a cocktail reception, just to throw one out there. But there's a variety of different things you do. So, it's a multipurpose space, but with a variety of different floor plans that we would pitch in a marketing packet, essentially, as to why you should rent the space, and how, and what it can do for you, when you're basically looking at the 204.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Go ahead, Don.
This isn't for you. This is just a, it's a larger discussion. I mean, we had, and it's nothing you could answer. We had an insanely large amount of free cash. I mean, just historical. And there was some large part of me that felt like, after all the searing bonding and, and all of the things that have been inflicted upon people, that we were going to set aside more than what it appears that we're going to. This is not free cash in the sense of free. I was hoping, that's why I was hoping to put off the auditorium until it was fleshed out a little bit more, because I would really, really, really like some sort of substantial amount to go back to the taxpayers in the form, maybe not in the form of lowering their taxes this year, but buying down the debt load that we have incurred, because it was their money in the first place. And just because we under, I'm really unclear about how we got here, but that's a massive percentage of 40-something million dollars, because we don't control the, the schools. We just control the town budget and underestimate, or overestimate what we were going to spend, and underestimate what we were going to generate in taxes and fees. By that magnitude is, is really impressively large. I'd like to give it, I'd like to give something back to the taxpayers, and I'm trying to find some spaces to do that.
Thank you, Don. And I agree with you a lot about free cash. We've had this conversation now for four years. And looking at the total number for 204 Sisson, it's 1.9. The total to bring the auditorium online, and tonight's packet shows potential revenue, and I believe that was underestimated, potential revenue. And, and for me, looking at that space and the potential of that space, is exactly what the vision of this building has been, and continuing to use more spaces and bring in additional revenue to offset the costs. Larry?
Thank you, Michael. I actually put together some writing, your request.
Thank you. Joe, Joe has that, and acknowledged that.
I'm not going to go through it all. The, you can thank me for that. Because, in general, two things, because, you know, the cost report that you all put together and gang is very good, the financial report, a lot of information. And I do thank Kara for the steps moving forward. My, my discussion in the past, and I tried to relay again in this memo, is, is outside of the basic capital expenditure we're doing now, I would very much like us to develop a, a regional plan, a plan of how we're going to use it, spaces like the auditorium and others. I think you've already started this, but are there areas that we should be working on? And are there areas that we should not, because other towns can do it better? Have we reached out to Cape Verdean people, mental health, things like that, that grant money, can help pay it? I would very, very much like, in addition to all the good work right now, to have a committee, a formal committee, look at a regional solution, you know, practice, because we could be a leader in the, in the region of doing all this, and take that in hand. I do appreciate, and I did, I did very much appreciate the letters and support. Obviously, the artists in there have done a great job. My discussion is not, not disregarding that, is how we can take that core and build on it. And in that regard, I was, I know it's taken as a positive, I actually take it as a bit of a negative, that our cost comparisons are all comparing like-minded or like-act facilities, rather than what we could do to combine and do things in a different way. I'd like a little more creative look at, you know, who does what best. We don't have to do everything for everyone. Maybe we could pair up with another and do something. Because that was my first, from a, from a vision side. From a financial side, you know, I, I even hesitate to the business plan, because people object to that. I, I don't, because no one expects us to be profitable. It's a town resource. But I do strongly believe we should have an idea of what our revenues are and our expenses are, so, in helping our decision-making. We go blind, that's where you see a lot of people get into trouble of not understanding what's going on. And I, and I do have some criticism in that regard on the cost report, Joe, in that it gives a sort of a estimated cost, for instance. In the past, we've gotten some more detailed information, but even that's been sometimes confusing. I know I look back at one report where it shows that we have cash on hand, and as you're careful, you think that comes from operations. In fact, it didn't. It came from town warrant article. And I think we need to be careful so we understand operations from the other cash flows, so we can help make, make those decisions. And I would, I would like to go back and spend more time on that, so we fully understand. My personal view is, from all discussions I had, there's a lot of support for this. But we need to be, explain what the expenses are clearly, in a way that's understandable. I agree with that, and what the revenues are. The other point I would argue right now is that, and I don't want, I'm trying to say this not in a negative way, and I, well, let me say it in a negative way. There's a, a large percent of the rough drawing we have in utilizing the space for municipal purposes. And I would like to have that, much more thought given to that, because, you know, just because that space is there does not mean it's free space. It's a cost to the town, any time we utilize space. And any space we use for municipal purposes takes that away from potential cultural, other activities that we look at. And I would like for us to, and you can handle this, actually, in a, in a financial format, you can call us out that space, the same way you do with the, you know, I'll use cultural space, to see what that means, what are we giving up, and to be sure that we're making that judgment on increasing municipal space in a serious way. We're just not kind of making a judgment that, "Well, it's town building, so just go ahead and use it." Let's make a disciplined financial discussion, and relate, and relate that to our staffing deeds, and this, and, and come to a conclusion on that. And I think that's a discussion we need to have going forward. So, those are really my, my main points.
Thank you, Larry. Before I get into my comments, Joe, and I guess to the whole board first, Larry's looking for a breakdown on the cost analysis, and he just wants more detail. Does anyone have a problem with that?
I, I don't have any problem with that, but I would also say, the reverse is the cost it would be to not do anything to the building, right? The cost it would be to not use the space. I think that if you're going to look at all of those, which I, I understand, you know, the reasoning for them. The other thing, though, is in terms of space and municipal, I think you need to look at, what does it cost us if we have to take files to store them securely elsewhere, or anything like that? Because we all know that Town Hall is completely overcrowded. So, if that means space is freed up here, because it's more secure to move, you know, another division over there, how, how do we analyze that? Because, in all fairness, we're not looking to use just some of those places that are still available at 204. And that, again, needs to be vetted by the board. But there's, there's a cost associated with that as a positive, too, not just a negative. And that's all I'm saying, is, we're looking, if we're looking at that, we also need to look at the alternative.
And specifically, because I was going to bring that up later, or next, specifically the cost, and the cost that, that Joe gave us for a cost on 204 Sisson Road, didn't have the detail in it that Larry wanted. So, a breakdown of what you've already provided. That's, that's, is there any problem providing the breakdown of the cost that you put in your report?
I don't believe so. I, I think I can work with Selectman Valentine and find out what data there is.
We actually had that before in a previous report. It's just been, it's now a year old.
Yeah, it was-
And that's what I'm getting at. We have it. You arrived at a number. We should be able to back that out and come up with the number that created the total number.
So, each of the department heads that assisted me in that has that background, if that's what we're talking about. So, I have the raw reports, if you will. We can certainly provide that.
Thank you.
It will tie back to the numbers in the report, though.
Don?
Maybe I was a little unartful, but I'm exactly in the same place that Larry is in terms of that amorphous blob of, for government use. I, I'd like it be brought down into some sort of detail, in the manner that he's talking about. That's exactly what I was talking about.
And again, I'm not arguing we all need the space. I just think-
No, no, we're, we're onto space again. I'm trying to get past one thing. I'm trying to get past the numbers. I'll get into space in a minute.
Oh, the numbers, cost breakdown.
Cost breakdown. You can get those reports and work with Selectman on that.
If, if what I said a moment ago was agreeable.
Julie, is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Mary, is that agreeable?
Yes.
Larry, is that agreeable?
Disagreeable.
Don?
I was just saying it was more than just Larry.
Okay. Now, Mark, I noticed you got to stand for a while. I'm going to let Kara speak before you, so I was going to suggest you might want to sit down. Mark, you might want to sit down, and I will call on you first after Kara, but the board's going to hash this out before I get into anyone else. As an employee, though, Kara?
Yes. So, one thing is just in regards to space, Joe and I have already had conversations as we navigate grants, and we're looking at what needs to be allocated to what, for mass cultural grants, for us to still qualify as that cultural center, to be able to get the big money that we need, we have to be a minimum of 51% cultural space. And when you look at the building as a whole, it's not too scary. But if we start dissecting and cutting, it, it gets a little tighter and a little bit scarier that we may not now qualify for those particular items. And then I do just ask, because I do have to advocate for all cultural resources out there, artists and creatives, because ultimately, that is the vision of our department. I do ask that we do talk to the stakeholders that are involved in the building. I think it's extremely important, as you guys probably have, I've heard that letters have been sent out, so you've been notified, but I do ask that they get brought to the discussion, and they do get an opinion, or at least a say, or a voice in the matter. And I do just hope that we'll get to that point.
I would only end to that with, of course.
Thank you.
And, and anyone that's been paying attention to our meetings knows that we have been strong supporters of what's going on in that building.
Yeah, and we, we tremendously do appreciate the support. And we want to succeed, and that's what this is all about.
Okay. Joe?
Just another factum to put out there, based on what Kara just said. So, 51% of the use has tied back to culture. Now, we've talked about the fact that that can be the government program, that everything that Kara's working on meets that definition of culture, and the programs she has. The town also has to recognize that 31% of the building has to be used for government operations to be insured, and to be recognized as a useful municipal building. So, those are the numbers we're trying to balance. So, I want to come back to that a little bit later, but 51%, 51% for cultural purposes, 31% for municipal coverage of the municipal building.
Thank you, Joe. Mary?
I just wanted to comment, because I meant to earlier. We did get several emails from some of the people that are in the 204. And one thing that upset at least one person was to see the, the offices laid out, and where she currently has her studio, shows municipal, or shows something. And I just want to make sure that that's just a plan. Before we were to do anything, there would be discussion with the people that are going to be affected. And there may need to be some movement, but there would certainly be discussion with those people who have contributed to the town for, what, four years? Five years?
2016. Julie, anything further?
No, I agree with Mary, and that's what I was saying, is, you know, any kind of municipal use, we would have to further vet the use and the location. So, yeah, I don't disagree with any of that. And I, and again, I think that we need to also consider the economic benefit of any kind of, you know, swapping of space that we would do, and understanding that we are looking at these numbers of 51, you know, 30, 31. But I also think we need to be mindful of the fact that we have two different cultural designations, and we, we, I think, are the only one in the state. Is that right?
Hyannis.
Oh, Hyannis.
The only town, the small town.
Town.
The answer to the public was Hyannis, but we're the only small town. We have to speak at the mic.
Yeah, so-
So, everybody sees it.
Right. So, you know, we, we also want to make sure that we don't jeopardize that. I mean, it's a distinction for Howard, so.
Thank you, Julie. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just following up my comment that Joe made, because I'm sure somebody's going to follow up on it. A question. If it's 30%, can you just explain briefly about how we're insuring the community center? Because most of that activity is aging, or whatever. We don't occupy it as a municipal building for more than 30%, do we, in terms of expenditures?
Joe?
Thank you. So, every building that we recognize to be a town building, and the phrase "town building" is in air quotes, although the youngsters tell me that's no longer cool to do, so I won't do that. 100 Oak Street, known as the community center, is known to be completely a municipal building. And that's why it's covered by MIA, M-I-A, our insurance provider. There have been statements and documents relied upon in the past, in previous administrations, that have referred to 204 Sisson Road as a private building, or as private property. And in fact, I think many of the tenants presently could talk about the fact that one of the reasons why they were not allowed to show their wares or sell them, is because they told, they were told the property wasn't zoned for that. It's a residential zoning. It's a municipal building, which can go anywhere in zoning. And municipal buildings can do as municipal governments do. So, according to MIA, when there was conversation in years past about what would it cost to insure the building, the, the response came back, remember that any municipal building has to have at least 31% of municipal operations occurring there. Now, I'm using the words 51% and 31% as words, and not numerical values, meaning, we can achieve the 51% that Ms. Moini just talked about, that we need to demonstrate to get cultural grants, while having 100% of that occur in a municipal building. But if we are going to call, and that's why I have struggled the last 18 months, to call it by its street address, because 204 Sisson Road, and this would be my question to everybody, and, and it's not rhetorical, do we all believe that 204 Sisson Road is and has been, since 2014, a municipal building?
I mean, yes.
Yes.
You got two yeses over here. Larry?
Sure.
Larry's assured. Don?
And we voted to call it a cultural center, and yes, we called, said it was a municipal cultural center.
A municipal building.
No, we actually named it. I vote.
But do you believe it's a municipal building?
I do.
For the exercise we're doing right now?
It was then, and it still is.
So, then the 31% factor for insurance does not come into play. We're using 204 Sisson Road as one of the town of Harwich's municipal buildings, primarily, right now, for cultural affairs programming. And so, I'm confident that we meet both of those thresholds. The 31% for it not to be considered abandoned for municipal purposes by the insurance company, and the 51% for the grantors that are looking at it, saying what's in there. But we, but we all have, and when I say "we," if I could, I mean, everybody in town talking about that property. It's not a Joe thing. I'm not trying to change history. But if we don't all understand that 204 Sisson Road, like 732 Main Street, which is where we are, is a municipal building, then we've got a bigger problem.
Yeah, we just got a consensus on that. What year was this building built?
88.
1988?
Rebuilt.
Rebuilt, 1988.
Cape Cod, five, and the Cape Cod Bank and Trust, that's why you have your two front doors, really, huh?
Any idea what the budget was in 1988? Come on, Don.
I don't know. I don't even know who ran the whole series in 1988.
Really, the, the point is, now we're on, we've already, we've agreed to get some background on the, the cost number. Now, we got to talk about space. And, and we talk about the employee that we hired, and we talk about the town administrator, and we talk about the facilities committee director, we talk about Eric Beebe, the director. But most importantly, we talk about the gentleman to our far left that we asked to run our buildings. And he's made a very basic map of where things lie right now. And for me, I don't, I don't know why the board would hamstring the town administrator to come up with a more definitive plan, when, when really, we're talking about eight classrooms, if I'm not doing math correctly. Why we would want to come up with a more definitive plan than what we have right now, rather than continue to task him with, with filling that building with activities, town department heads as we need. And my comment on this building is, we're bursting at the seams. The budget was less than half back then, of what it is today. The town has grown, whether we want to- The town has grown, whether we wanna admit it or not, and we have, we have, we have gone beyond our means at town hall. So the fact that we have this building is a blessing, and every town that I speak to says they wish they had our problem, and they wish that they had a building that they were fighting over who would be where and what programs we could use that building for. And, you know, I'll go to one of the finance committee comments. The building, the Board of Selectmen should acknowledge upfront that they intend to keep this building. Does any board member here tonight not wish to keep this building?
It's newer than this one is.
That got decided a long time ago.
Right, thank you. So consensus is we wanna keep the building, so we can, I can check that box that we answered that question. So, and looking at, looking at throughout their document and throughout what they asked for, and Larry, I definitely appreciate what you're asking for, and I think we've nailed at least 50% of it tonight that we're gonna, that we're gonna go forward with. But build it and they will come, as Don said. They've come. Town Hall, we're gonna have to move department heads over there, and then ultimately, later in the future, maybe contemplate moving town hall there. But we have the asset, so to mothball it, not use it, and take away what we're doing, because the other comment that a finance committee member made, maybe two, was to not bring up the concept of what it costs to do nothing. Well, if they're so laser-focused on what it costs to use the building and bring in some revenue and keep it in a condition that we may be able to use it in the future, the most important number is what it costs to do nothing.
Right.
And we already have an estimate of over a million dollars to tear it down. I do disagree with Larry about the overwhelming consensus at town meeting for housing, because of the way it was presented to town meeting. It was built as one lot, as one lot for a school, and the thought of taking, and I know you said that ship sailed, Larry, but these are all very important into the board's decision to continue to use that building.
What, yeah.
We're making progress. We're doing more every year, and with the auditorium and the $475,000 we're asking for, opens up that auditorium. It opens up another area, and we've seen some revenue projections. None of us at this table are gonna sit and pull things out of the sky. And to the finance committee member that went outside of any vote and went to a consultant and asked for a proposal to go through that building, sent to the board today, they are so outside of their lane, somebody needs to remind them of what the finance committee's supposed to be doing, and that's not it. So to be criticized, and I watched the meeting, and that's why I'm being a little harsh on it, because anyone that washes, watched the meeting of the finance committee, it's like we don't exist, and it's a level of criticism, and critiquing the policymakers as what they're supposed to be is the finance committee, and they do nothing on any of the other buildings that we do. And quite frankly, it's getting old. Mark, you wanna speak?
Can I respond to that a bit?
Go ahead.
Just very quickly. Only that, I did put in the memo because it's the fact that we had a non-binding vote at town meeting to go to housing, because people thought housing was important. And then we had a strong resident rebuttal to that, if you will, and the Board of Selectmen, majority vote, decided not to do that. I'm not trying to make a judgment beyond that, only to, only to the sense that even then, the town recognized housing was extremely important. They came back and said, okay, we don't agree with that. In terms of the space, I see nothing wrong in asking Joe to justify the spaces going forward. It's there, it's an asset, but I wanna be sure it's a very serious discussion, because it's not a, it's a zero-sum game. Any space you use for municipal purposes are not available to us to use it for cultural purposes, and that should have some good, good detailed discussion about going forward. And I think Jeff justified asking that question.
So go back to that topic. Joe, can you do a little bit more to justify what you blocked out? For me, I could see leaving it blocked out for future municipal use, but to Larry's point, if we can make a dollar on it, it's a dollar that we don't have today.
And that's okay. That's a plan. Do you wanna use or some, let's get some, let's have some background, thought process.
Joe?
It was meant to stimulate discussion of this sort. The operational cost analysis that I did was in response to a board directive several months ago before the last town meeting, in anticipation of the next town meeting. And so for me, relying on past materials that the town has paid for relative to that building, it was simple for me to say, if you look at the building in terms of classroom wing, activity wing, et cetera, et cetera, how it was laid out by architects responding to marketing materials back in 2011 and 2012. As Selectman Anderson said, it was never intended to be, this is the floor plan. Further, the operational analysis was to try to give everybody a level of comfort with the operational costs going forward as we've laid them out, and the purposes for those operational expenditures. The question still remains, what are we going to do with the building? So this evening, to get the consensus that it is a municipal building, that the board is committed to that building, is a sea change, that you haven't had that level of clarity, I think it's fair to say, since predecessor board's vote back in April of 2018. So the question of space use is, is an ongoing one. The question of how many tenants are we going to have under agreement, which is a standard procedure that we do in several buildings, versus operational needs of the town versus revenue? Because what I've heard over the several years that I've been here and heard about this, I mean, I, as interim town administrator, in the late summer of 2020, we all know what was happening then, on a remote, completely remote meeting, was asked by a finance committee member at the time, excuse me, by a capital outlay member who was on the finance committee, what's the plan for 204 Sisson Road? And that was literally the first time I had heard that question relative to that building in my role as an interim. And my answer was along the lines of, I don't know, what's the current plan?
Thank you, Joe. Getting back to the space, because for me, I care about checking boxes so we don't have to have this conversation repeated every other week. What more detail would you like to see, Larry? Because I certainly appreciate your request.
I think Joe's, I think Joe's outlined it. You know, what, how does he use that immediately? If he wants to look something in the future? I just wanna be careful that that's a, we understand that, because again, our direction, our vision has been the cultural center, number one, basically, and the initial thing, number two. Let's be sure we're, we're bouncing those two out.
Okay. So you're comfortable with his last statement, or do you want something brought back?
I don't want anything brought back. I think you can define it more and just, and email to us or something.
Okay. Joe?
And I try to be brief, but relative to that last comment, that's something that Kara and I have talked about and purposely haven't had those conversations yet with the tenants, because didn't know where we were going with this.
Thank you.
So this conversation tonight is extremely helpful, and there are decisions that need to be made programmatically to see if there are tenants who wanna renew their leases, if we're going to continue, and it sounds like we are definitively tonight on cultural uses, then we can start taking actions that we've purposely held off because of the discussions that have to happen with the policymaking board that you are and with the finance board that's gonna make recommendations on the capital plan. So this meeting is getting us much further down the line than any other meeting has before, and it gives me the direction to work with my team to start making decisions.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be really clear, based on what Kara was saying too, and the emails, my expectation as a member of the board is that it isn't just a discussion about you wanna renew, you don't wanna renew. There really needs to be a stakeholder discussion that is beyond that. It's what's aspirational? What can you see more that can occur there in terms of your constituency? There's visual, there's performing arts, there's sculpting arts, there's painting arts, there's all kinds of arts, and I, I had always presupposed, when we got deeper into this, that stakeholders we brought in, not for, not for just one meeting to say, hey, we're gonna do this, but asking them, what do you see as a future? Along with Kara putting that all together, coming up with some sort of, but it's not just a mission statement. It has to do with what are the possibilities and how can we possibly get there? Not, do you wanna renew your lease?
Thank you, Don. Joe?
From my perspective as the town administrator, and the truest sense of what it means to administer, the policies and actions of the board, I think the stakeholder conversation should happen at this level.
Thank you, Joe.
What it should happen, when we weigh the other?
Right, and we've already agreed that we will have that. Mary, anything further on this?
No, I'll say.
Okay, so we're good on space, we're good on numbers. Mark?
Mark Kelleher, West Howard. I'm speaking tonight as a resident taxpayer. I am a member of the finance committee and the capital outlay committee, but I was not directed by them to do anything. On my own, because I saw a lack of information, I solicited two engineering companies for a capital need study. I got a price from one, and I've sent today to the chairman that price, and I think more importantly, I sent to him the, a template, some past examples of the work they have done. Now, the work they've done is quite extensive. It's 20 or 30 pages. One was an air conditioning study, which I think is very germane, since I hear that being discussed about administrative offices. I sent that to the chairman, and I hope he shares it with you, because it gives a detailed cost study of what an air conditioning system is, but these capital need studies do a complete study of the MEP, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and a building envelope. I did this not to usurp anybody's authority. I wanted to bring to the board and to the town good information. So I've sent one proposal to the board, there's another one coming in, and I hope you consider it, because it will cover a lot of the things that I hear you talking about, Larry, the costs, building envelope, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. It will probably cover your future uses for air conditioning. And I'm coming at this from a person who has visited that cultural center several times. I want it to succeed. I want it to succeed, and I think she, the whole crew there has great ideas, but I think we owe it to the people for full disclosure. And that's why, and I apologize if you think I was out of line, I went out and did that because full disclosure will help to get this to go forward. What you don't wanna see is you walk back in three or four years from now with additional millions of costs, which I think could, could be very well possible. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Joe, will you just outline so that Mark understands what the, what the process is for the, for requests for proposals if we went this route?
Sure. The quick statement is, proper municipal procurement, when seeking information from vendors, or quotes as was suggested, has to be predicated on an understanding of a dollar amount, and depending upon what that dollar amount value is, dictates what happens next. So if the value of the solicited service is understood to be greater than $10,000 and less than $50,000, then you have to solicit from three vendors. If it's greater than $50,000, you have to do a qualified request for proposals.
Thank you.
I'm chomping at the bit to make a comment about whether it's appropriate for municipal procurement to be done outside of the town's procurement process.
It's not. You don't have to say it. And I, in the proposal, it states your name, and it states member of the finance committee. So whomever you spoke to, you at least told them that you're on the Howard's Finance Committee, and I think it's, the other quote that's in there, I'll stop there, but the other quote that's in there, the project as we understand it. Who's "we"? There's no "we," because this board are the policymakers, and we didn't give you any direction. The finance committee, in the 14 or 15-page rant, it actually mentions to assign that to you, for Mark to talk to his experts. That's not the right language, and I'm gonna go back to it. The finance committee is way outside of its lane, and it is getting old for you to try and step over this board, which you are. And I will also say, not specific to you, it's disingenuous for people to continue to stand at that microphone and say what they support at the same time as they're trying to undermine it. And this project, it's very, very clear, and I hope the press picks it up and actually writes, the request through our town administrator, through the department heads that are in that building, through our facilities committee, is for 1.9 million for very specific things. 1.5 million goes back to 2011, when members of the Board of Selectmen back there said what was wrong with the building. We're not asking, as to all the notes that are in that, and I hope the public takes the time to read it, all the notes that are in there are telling us what we need to study, talking about replacing carpets. If the building's bringing in revenue, it's no different from your house. When you have enough revenue, if your carpets are old, you replace them. It's gonna be work in progress going forward, and this board just said that we're gonna keep and use the building. So I hope that the finance committee can find it in itself to stay in their lane and do what they're supposed to do, and it's a very clear definition in the charter of what that is. Is there anything else further on this? Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this? Moving on to capital. Board discussion on the fiscal 2024-2028 capital outlay plan and fiscal year 2024 capital budget, votes may be taken. We're gonna start with the information technology capital submissions. We all have that in spreadsheet form in front of us, and the IT director is here. Really, to the board, the goal is to start voting some of this capital, and Don, to your point, I don't wanna spend all the money either, but the longer we wait to continue to vote things, the more scramble we're gonna have in the end. So anything that we can agree on based on presentation, we certainly can make motions and vote those items tonight. And we do still have to vote to accept the capital plan at some point, but I'm not sure we're ready to do that yet. Mary?
Before we go piece-part at this, I'd like to go back to something Don talked about that you talked about once before. I think it was when we got the money back from both Montemoy and the tech.
That was last year.
We talked about getting that money back to the taxpayers. That's not in this money, correct? So that is still available for us to decide to give back to the taxpayers.
It's in this money, because it had to go back into, we voted a special. Joe, will you explain it?
So you may recall that council indicated that the actions of town meeting on October 2022 were as presented to meet the board's desire to further give back, meaning by taking the two money, the two sources of funds that we got, we ended up reducing our overall general fund. That reduces the overall tax rate when you do all that rigmarole. That's the fanciest way I can say it. But the, the concept of giving something back to the taxpayers, you then directed me to work with council, and council will have a warrant article in the annual town meeting article to appropriate or otherwise fund some action for the benefit of the taxpayers. So that's not in the capital plan, it's not related to free cash, it is based on the board's directive and desire to continue to try to support the taxpayers.
Can I do a follow-up? Do I understand, then, that that money from the two schools is part of the $7 million free cash?
In a way.
I'm getting a yes.
So my learned finance director is saying no, and that's who I'm looking towards.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll remind you I'm a taxpayer.[1714.23][1714.23](Laughter). I live here in Howard.
Name for the record, please.
Oh, Ann Maria Ellis. I just wanna clarify, your free cash is everything that you did in FY '22.
Right.
Okay? So that's another year. The result of the reduced assessments for the school hits FY '23.
Okay.
So when you set your tax rate, that's where you're getting your give back to the taxpayer, because they now have a lower rate, a higher valuation, but a lower rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don?
But they don't realize an actual cash savings out of that. One goes up, one goes down, and the net that you owe is the same. I think Mary was asking, did anybody get anything back in dollars?
I was, I was trying to sort out if it was in that free cash, but Ann Maria's clarified that. It's in this year's, or it's not in this year's budget, effectively.
Right.
And my point was, setting the tax rate has virtually no benefit to the taxpayers, because again, you value, you have your assessments, you have the value of the whole town, you have a bucket that the town needs to operate with, and then that, what you did tax plus two, two and a half under the law. And then that, what you did tax plus two, two and a half under the law allows you to levy taxes on the people. No matter what the equation is, if your house is worth more and the tax rate is less, or if the tax rate's more and your house is worth less, you come out with the same amount of money in the end. So nobody actually gets any relief, is my point. Unless we specifically say that we want that money to go somewhere, which we haven't yet.
I might point out just a simple little arithmetic equation. And that would be to take your valuation that you have now on the bills that just went out and multiply that by last year's rate, which is two dollars or more in change. And then you'll see what you are actually saving.
So you.
Go ahead, Julie.
So that's what I'm thinking, is that ultimately, to your point, the money is in twenty-three, it's not in twenty-two. But the overall, that money is really overall reducing the tax taxable rate to the taxpayers because you're ultimately seeing a lower tax rate. It's not just a, you know, your assessment goes up, your tax rate goes down. Those numbers come from somewhere, and that money is in that area to then bring that money, those tax rates down. So every taxpayer is saving something.
Yes.
Noreen. Then back to the others.
I'm going to speak on behalf of the taxpayers here because if we try, if we try to explain to people that the savings was already in the tax rate, I mean, I figured out my taxes because the assessing department was so timely and actually put the new valuations on the website last week. So I don't even need my tax bill. I went up seven and a half percent. So there's no way you're going to tell me that's a savings from Montemoy. You know, and I know everybody's going to have a different story by what the evaluation was, what the, you know, comps were in some other area and, you know, everything else. And then a lot of people are going to say, oh, well, that's just wastewater, which also isn't true because a lot of the bonds haven't even hit the tax rate yet. So if we have somehow given relief to the taxpayers, we're going to need to communicate that in a much different way than we have. Because I'm up seven and a half percent, so I don't see a big savings there.
Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I respectfully disagree, and I know that that comes off as a bludgeon to some people, but I am going to say it anyway. I respectfully disagree because it really depends on what we adopt. If we take a tax rate that's plus two and a half percent, as we're allowed to under law, there's no way you can explain to me that everybody is getting money back. We thought, we did give money to the stabilization fund. I mean, and that was a promise we made. But I mean real money that's going back to somebody like paying down a note. Or something that we can actually demonstrate, as Noreen was saying to the public, that we did save you money because you could have been paying this, but you are now paying that. We haven't had that discussion at all.
Joe? You all set?
Yep.
Anyone else on this? Julie, you good?
I just, I just think for Anne Marie's sake and, you know, to try to explain what she's trying to explain, and I'm looking at Richard to sort of explain in a way that I know it, but I can't explain it well. I can't articulate it, good word. And I think that Richard can, based on the real estate background, to go through the assessments. If you could simplify that, I know you can.
Richard.
Mr. Chairman, Richard Waystack of Howard. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers and our Finance Director. You are going to be a person who is impacted by a real estate market that has gone up twenty-three percent just in the last year.
In dollars.
In, in real dollars, people. Your tax rate does change based on the valuation of the town, and it can increase two and a half percent plus a growth factor that is figured in every year. To try to explain the taxation and whether you're going to save or lose money, and where money is being absorbed in free cash, is it being put into this account, to that account, to that account? You know, the stabilization fund. What I look at, I say, I have an overlay account. And to try to explain that to the general public tonight as an overlay account, can't do it. That is money that's set aside so that, as we did in our assessors meeting tonight, we gave senior tax credits, a credit of fifteen hundred dollars to people in need in this community, comes from that account. Money that we control as your Board of Assessors. When we did hardship exemptions to members of this community, and it would shake all of you to the core to see some of the income, and we had one tonight. They received social security income, their full income for a year of seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. Did we give them a hardship exemption? Absolutely, we did. So those folks will get some relief for their tax. Some of that money, that free cash, the levy limit that allows excess capacity was put into different places, and one of those is the account for the overlay. That some additional money was put in. That money is, we're utilizing. And when we have the abatements, because this young lady may come and say, wait a minute, my taxes are up seven and a half percent. I want to challenge the value of my home. I don't think my home went up. My home went up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, based on the real estate market.
So reeling this back into the question about the school money.
Yeah.
No matter what, your taxes and your, you are going up.
Yeah.
There is a benefit to saving that seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, but to Noreen's point, nobody's ever going to see it because we're all going to go up seven and a half plus percent.
No, and the thing is that I don't want the young lady's comment to scare everybody. Some people's taxes will actually go down. But if you live in certain neighborhoods, neighborhoods went up and down by location. So the school money in that, you know the budget probably better than anybody does, it's being absorbed. And I know my office and my role as my committee that I have got some funds to utilize to help the citizens of this, this community. And if we don't use that money, our overlay account, every year, we confer with the Finance Director and the Town Administrator, and those funds come back to the town again.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
John, Don, go ahead, and then we're going to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as your punctuation point, we're talking apples and oranges. Really not talking about the overlay account or anything like that. We're talking about, or the relativist argument about my house is worth more because my neighborhood is invested more because houses were sold for more there, and other neighborhoods went down. Because we all know that like thirty years ago, people living by a pond actually gained money because it was a cold place to be, and all of a sudden that flipped, and you got taxed a hell of a lot more because you lived by a pond. Understand all that. I'm talking about the gross picture that we wound up with seven point something million dollars because we get, we taxed more than we spent. And I would like to assure that on the aggregate, the whole, not my house versus your house, or the tax rate versus the assessed rate, all that stuff is daunting to hear. All I want to know is that we got this kind of money. Are we going to buy things with it? Or are we going to actually help some taxpayers by doing something tangible like giving it back? Like bonds that we hold, notes that we hold. Maybe we retire them sooner or just pay them down a little bit more. Not the ones that have zero percent. We wouldn't do that.
Specific to the school.
The school money is just something else in the constellation. It came back and anything, we all can agree that anything that was left over last year, it's dumped into free cash. So it's not specified where it came from, it's just, we didn't spend that in FY twenty-two or twenty-three? Twenty-three. So it, okay, twenty-two, then it rolls over. So it doesn't matter where that came from. It's an aggregate number, I get that. And it's a discussion for another day, but I'm just saying that there has not been, whether it's that money itself, the, the school money, or any other money. There hasn't been a discussion about how we give taxpayer relief to anybody. And it's frightening to see numbers that we're spending out because we all know we go to town meeting, it's not the same discussion if you say, are we going to go to a debt exclusion to do this? As opposed to, hey, we got seven and a half million dollars so we can spend some of that. That's my concern. I would like to be able to address the taxpayer having overpaid last year.
So you want to have a conversation about giving back some of the money?
I would.
All right, Joe, that's going to be a future agenda item? Thank you. Moving on to the capital. What's the board's pleasure? Given the hour, do you want to dive into the entire capital plan across the board or just look at FY twenty-four requests?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
Very quickly, because we do have some department heads or all the department heads present, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge their work, most especially with all due respect to my veteran, longstanding, tenured employees, the work done by our newly hired Director of Information Technology. Sarah's second day on the job, I tasked her with something that had not been done, I think, in several years. And that was actually build a capital plan for information technology because it's sorely needed. So I do want to at least put that out there again. Police, fire, wastewater, they do the great job they always do. But our newest, one of our newest department heads did above and beyond. And it was the first major assignment that she had. And from my perspective as her boss, she's done an exceptional job with that project.
Thank you, Joe. We all certainly have had IT in our goals and objectives and not done a whole lot in the last seven or eight years. What do we want to get into? Twenty twenty-four requests, or do we want to go across the board?
I think we need to simplify in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to simplify my own questions. Every single one of these things I'm going to ask, was that in last year's year two? And if it isn't, then presuming it's going to be a two-thirds vote, or I'm just going to vote against it for whatever the category is.
Okay. Twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
We will invite you up, the IT director up first.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, as the IT director approaches, I will tell you that the answer is no. There was no information technology capital plan prior to this year, so it did not appear last year.
And if I'm reading it correctly, the board could certainly support this. As well as when the article comes forward about the changes in the capital plan, the board can either vote to support that or not. And ultimately, town meeting will make the decision on the two-thirds. But there really is no, in my mind, reason why the board wouldn't support individual requests at this level when we have the mechanism for the two-thirds vote, if there's an article created for that.
And.
Mary?
And I believe, Joe, the last time we talked about the capital budget, you made a statement that you, you were going to have to have a space there for when we had an IT director to, to put in a request.
Correct.
So it was known that we were going to need to put something in there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, I mean, if I support individual ones, there's going to be a final vote about how those are approached, the ones that weren't there last year?
I think what we're going to do is we have a meeting with, on the seventeenth, I believe, was the date, with Charter bylaw to kind of go over some of the statements that have been made, comments that have been made, and how we arrived at this situation. But if you're correct.
Are we going to make?
If you're correct, then it takes a two-thirds vote, there will have to be an article for town meeting floor.
We are going to have that discussion, though?
Oh, yeah, seventeenth, we started with capital outlay.
Okay.
To get to that point. You're up. Tell us about your twenty twenty-four requests, please.
Okay, so the, I had broke it down into several categories, like the building infrastructure, a hundred and five thousand, doing fiber runs between the buildings, workstation replacements, because a lot of the computers and various things, printers, all things like that, that require to run, you know, services nowadays with technology, upgrading those, because there's some that are still running like Windows Seven, Windows Seven and things like that, that are a security hole risk, basically, because Microsoft doesn't support those anymore. And then also looking at web-based services, one major thing being the website upgrade. In Orleans, I had gone through updating their website, and I was in charge of that project. So if you look at like Orleans website, that's what I was doing. So running off of that, definitely bringing like all the different departments with websites in under one town website under the harwich-ma.gov. So you can search through everything, and it's all cohesive. And then also under that, the GIS enhancements for the web-based GIS, that will help better, people better navigate when they're trying to zoom in and look at properties and stuff. And then also expanding the Open Gov permitting software to get more permits online for that. And so that total is three, three hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars for next fiscal year. And then in the continuing years, like just building off of those, the, the building infrastructure for each buildings throughout the town and the workstations, things like that.
Excellent, thank you. Larry?
Things like that, huh?
Yes.
No, this is desperately needed. We, we've been talking about this longer than I, I'm going to admit to. And I'm especially excited about the Open Gov permitting that we. My, my concern always is that you're applying a software in the, in the management, I guess, so that various departments share the same databases, if you will, so the communication not duplicating and things, people are going in different directions, which makes your IT job a lot harder. You can't, is your sense that that's part of this, that you can pull the departments all working in the same formats?
Yes.
And make life easier and streamline our process?
Exactly, yes. So streamlining everybody, getting them all using the same technology, the same databases.
Same database, at least the same filing, and saves a lot of time and money.
Exactly.
Let me ask you a question. Fiber optics, we have Open Cape. You're adding to the Open Cape fiber now, or how's that?
I did talk with Steve, the representative in, for, for Open Cape. And that was definitely an option of looking at, there's also a grant that opens up in March. That's a state grant for running network fiber optics for town buildings and stuff like that. So once that opens up, I'm going to apply for that as an option for funding.
So you're, you're opting, you're basically adding to Open Cape as much as you can. Because I think we have Open Cape now coming from the police.
Yep.
To this building, for instance. And I think it goes to the community center as well.
Actually, those are the, yeah, they're not, those are the actual town-owned fiber runs, not through Open Cape. But Open Cape is definitely has, in Orleans also, with my old boss and stuff, we were talking a lot with Steve from Open Cape because Orleans wanted to put like Wi-Fi throughout the town for the residents. So definitely like, there's a lot of different things that you can do to help enhance the fiber capabilities throughout the town. You know, if things go down and stuff, and during some of the storms, last October in Orleans, the police station did have like, they have Open Cape on that, and they were up and running, and they were able to communicate through, through that. So Open Cape is definitely an option I'm looking at because of the strong reliability.
Thank you. Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel like I should have brought a weed whacker with me tonight, going to the weeds. But in any event, I spoke with a vendor who does our website about three or four years ago, the MMA. And I shared a problem that I saw. We were doing a lot of repetitive data entry because there are memo fields and there are data fields, and the memo fields don't deploy anywhere. For instance, our liaisons, the selectman liaisons to committees appear in the selectman's page, but they also appear in the committees. Every single one of those is a duplicate of entry because it doesn't carry over. I was like, can't there be a way of creating data fields where there's pointers so that every place where that appears across the entire webpage, it just automatically fills? It just seems insane that we're wasting busy time to make data entries because unifying the thing is really good, and having hyperlinks go all over the place would be great too. But that's a simple thing. We're stuck. We're, we're just continuously trying to search for, where else does this thing exist?
Yep. And one thing with the new Civic Plus platform, because the current, our current, Howard's current town website is on the old virtual towns and schools, which Civic Plus had bought out. So Civic Plus's platform, it's great because on the, on the backend, it looks like you're, if you're looking at your desktop computer and you're looking for your file system, it's there in each department. So say like building has their section of a bunch of documents and stuff, and other departments or committees want to link to that, they just go and they click on that and they link it right there. So everything is a lot more organized, both on the backend for the user and on the frontend for the residents and taxpayers and visitors looking at the website.
That's what he said, that they had upgraded, that we were not purchasing that modular. module at that time. I'm just worried that if we're going to do this, get rid of the busy work, especially for the committees.
Yep, yes.
Things that appear in different places, it can't be done that way, because there's always a possibility for an error with the data entry.
Yeah, it's a lot more streamlined, and it will be more cohesive.
Yay.
Mary?
This is so needed, it's just so obvious, and I'm no computer whiz, but it was pretty obvious trying to navigate to learn things that we had some work to do here, so I applaud your effort. I had talked to Ellen about a software I kind of stumbled into, I do some grant writing, and it, I think it was the town of Truro that uses this software to manage the committees and the appointments.
Are you talking about onboard?
I think that's the name of it.
Yes.
Is that in here?
Not to steal Joe's thunder, but we are setting that up.
Score. Okay, so that's not in here?
Uh, no, that's not, that's actually, that's happening right now. So we did the, I sent off the file document to onboard for them to upload, so that should be coming in the next couple of weeks to a month.
Great, that'll be wonderful. Thank you. No, this is great.
Julie?
So the fact that you put together such a comprehensive package, the idea of increased security right there, you have me, but let me just say that streamlining the website, the GIS and the Open Gov online permitting is like the amazing trifecta of all things that I, I just am so overwhelmed with the idea that we're going this direction, and it's about time, and thank you so much for the work.
You're welcome.
It's great.
Joe, how do you see this by way of votes? Just the capital plan is all you're ultimately going to want to vote, or do you want these individually voted to support?
Um, no, at this point, I would say that the way it's been done in the past is that there are two articles generally. The first article is to accept the budget, and that's the total number for that particular fiscal year. And then the second article, or subsequent articles, is to vote each appropriation. So if it's the board's understanding or consensus that the capital outlay plan for information technology as presented is suitable, you could make that statement for the record. But you're going to have a requirement under the articles to vote it anyway.
Okay. It's a pleasure of the board. Julie, go ahead.
Can I just ask one other question?
Yeah.
The onboard that you mentioned, is that the app, is that the app with the capability of reaching out to the public that we talked about?
No, that's the, sorry if I may, that's Community Engagement Onboard. Rainmaker Anderson brought that to our attention, and that's the current fiscal year 23 project we're able to do.
Okay.
Yeah, the other one is called Community Engagement Concept.
Yeah.
Don?
When will that be functioning?
Uh, we're still working on the funding source.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One more quick question, because, you know, there are lifetime licenses and there are renewable subscription licenses, and then there's the basic platform, there were, even the best were at 10, as far as I know, but that has an end of life at some point, too. In 11, not that I am a big fan of the odd number of Microsoft releases, they're like a black hole. But one thing that they do do in 11 is that the security is motherboard hard soldered into it. I mean, it's not a program to protect it. Windows 7 is insane, it has more holes than a Callender does. If we're using that, I'm not sure how we're protecting any data, because anybody who can hack at an elemental level could get into almost anything, and it's frightening. We have birth records, death records, tax records. I would love to be able to make sure we're secure. Is this going to be something more ongoing, where you're looking at the licenses for, you know, all of these as they lapse? Because even the, the problem with 11 is, you got to buy something with a motherboard that's no more than a year and a half, two years old, that has that capability and that'll support it, otherwise you can't get the vulnerability protection. And 10 has an end of life already scheduled in, where they're trying to dump you off of it right now.
Yeah, and that's why I have in there for like workstation replacements to have funding to replace any of those computers that don't have either Windows 10 or Windows 11 on it. With the Microsoft 365 upgrade that the, we're currently going through, all computers, you know, they'll either have to be running Windows 10 or Windows 11, and you get a licensing for Windows 11. So my goal is to make sure that everybody's running Windows 11. And then if any of the computers can't upgrade and are just running Windows 10, those would be ones that would be earmarked to be replaced first on the...
Yeah, I wanted to bring that up because the public needs to know it's not just capricious that we want a new shiny computer, that it's, if you don't get a new computer, even if they dumb down 11, which they're talking about doing, it doesn't give you the same level of protection. And we were almost caught this past year in a vulnerability during the past year. We caught an email that had a hyperlink that was to a bad person. Windows 7 that we even have that is frightening, but I mean, there's going to be a time where we're going to need to replace stations, because you can't get the new benefits from the old computer just because somebody opens it up and says, well, it still works.
Right. Yeah, so it's definitely going to have to be the newest versions of Microsoft Office to be safe and be compliant and, you know, protect the data. So we're doing the best we can to cover ourselves for data breaches.
Okay, you got me.
Thank you, that's it for now. You don't have to stay.
Okay.
I think it's fair to say that the board supports finally spending some money on IT.
Thank you, guys.
Get rid of the mice.
Yeah. I'm going to bring back under file, how we want to proceed with this account.
Yeah, because I'm not clear, are we voting each article?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it.
We don't need you, do we?
We don't need to, we can vote support.
We don't need to. Okay.
But we're generally supporting this.
Yes. Dan, let's give us all the bad news, and everything will look like pennies after you walk away.
You seem to be the problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I could do another preamble, it would be to say that the water wastewater superintendent is graciously willing to talk about wastewater infrastructure, recognizing that that's really the responsibility of the board and the town administrator. We have a great person who does all of that. So a big part of that is on the town side rather than the water wastewater commissioners.
Just give us all the bad news.
Good to go. All right. So I don't necessarily think there's a ton of bad news, I think there's some optimism tucked in here. So the numbers, budget figures that were in the capital plan were submitted back in August, which I would say ramping up to the height of inflation. That said, I'm optimistic, I did reach out to GHD to request updated cost figures for the three big projects they're working on, and they should be able to have those to us in about a month, by the end of the month. So I think we're really going to be waiting for that. We also recently received the draft intended use plan from DEP, which identifies all of the projects that they intend on funding in the upcoming year. For the wastewater side of things, we got great news, both of the wastewater projects, Phase 3 and the dry pipe on 28, were listed in the to be funded category. The water project unfortunately didn't make the cut. DEP's evaluation criteria this year were predominantly heavily weighted towards PFAS mitigation and lead service line replacement, which thankfully we do not have issues with at this point in time. So we kind of got the short stick on that one. We also did get, as I mentioned, Route 28, sewer main, a couple other big things that have changed since I was back before you. I think it was in October, we discussed gravity versus low pressure for Route 28. So that's going to offer a big savings from the 7 million that's in the plan. I think the numbers that we were looking at back in October were somewhere in the neighborhood of four, but like I said, we'll be firming those up at the end of the month.
Going which way, Dan? Gravity or to pump?
The cost of the, cost should go down.
Because we're going to gravity or because...
Because we're going to the low pressure pump system for Route 28. Yeah. With the Route 28 water main project, that's really broken up into two sections, from the Herring River to Dennis Town Line, and then Herring River to Lower County Road. Mass DOT is part of, planning to repave the stretch from Division Street to Herring River. With that, we're going to be a non-participatory agent of their project, and our sewer pipe and water main will be installed by Mass DOT, by the Mass DOT contractor, inspected by a Mass DOT inspector out in the road. So that's going to offer some considerable savings to us with respect to construction oversight for those two sections, as well as we will not need to use flowable fill or controlled density fill, it's basically like an excavatable concrete that's poured in the ground to help prevent settling. It's a requirement of DOT unless it's DOT doing the work. So in the original PEF, in project evaluation forms, that accounted for, I think, over $2 million of cost was just that concrete. So, well, they're high numbers, I do hope and anticipate that they will go down. Moving beyond those three, we do also have the new well source exploration phase two, that is to complete the test wells, install the pumping, the tests, the pumping tests, procurement oversight, a final source report, and permitting to complete the next phase of the project, which would be design and permitting, and then construction out in FY 26. Also for FY 24 is the pavement management plan. In this, we look to repave the access roads to our wellfields. We did Chatham Road a few years ago. This is the next kind of rolling five year, I think we're doing it every five years. This one is looking to repave the portions of the wellfield off of Depot Road that were not done when the treatment plant was built. When they did the treatment plant before I started, they'd only paved up to the treatment plant and neglected to do the remote well site. So this is looking to clean up the rest of that wellfield. I think that's all I have on for 24.
Thank you, Dan. Larry?
No questions.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fortuitously, the meeting that they postponed before Christmas for the Clean Waters Board is later this week. And just so everybody knows, the IUP property, I'd like to share those with me at some point, because several things are going to happen. They're going to be discussing the state, qualifying for the potential of zero interest loans is one thing, but at the board level in the county, where the rooms taxes are being collected, we have the, we have the rules and regulations all set out, that took about a year to do. But it really is important, because assuming you get an IUP approval, that makes you qualified to be able to be eligible, you put the Q there, but then they're going to be looking for that fairly soon, over the next few months, because they solidify their listing of eligible projects to get funding from rooms taxes, which is a whole different story from the state.
Yeah, no, and I, thank you for bringing that up. After I turned it over, I thought to myself, oh, I didn't go over any forgiveness that we may be receiving, which I think is an important thing. So with the IUP, we just received the draft IUP. My understanding is that the final version comes out sometime in February. Last time I spoke with the people over at the trust, they advised that at the time the final IUP comes out, we should also be provided with a better understanding of what our principal forgiveness is for each of these eligible projects. So I think, kind of hop, skip, and a jump to town meeting, we need to get the final draft IUP, we need to then get what we'll be receiving for principal forgiveness from the state, the county, and then we'd be looking to go to administration, finance director, to understand the tax implications for these projects. So it's going to be a busy late winter and spring.
But just to be clear, the county is, you actually request that, even if you're listed as an IUP, you actually have to be in line, request, I am eligible and I am here asking. So we do have to make a move to make that request to them when that gets certified.
Okay. All right, we'll follow tomorrow.
Eric?
I don't have any questions. You've kept us informed all along the way on this, so the numbers are what they are, and I appreciate that there's some ability for pieces to go down. Thank you, Dan.
Biggest cross. Julie?
Agreed, you've kept us all along informed of these numbers, and when I look at this just quickly, and I know they could change, but I mean, talking like almost 17 million, hopefully, in forgiveness, and it's the only time I like to be called the disadvantaged community.
Almost that, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next, Dan. Fire Department.
Thanks, Dan, you made it easy for us.
He ate it. Good evening.
So you're not asking for 17 million?
Not asking for 17 million.
Excellent.
Not even close. And for historical reference, the fire station was built in 1995, 16,000 square feet, $3 million. Actually, it was under 3 million because the, that was the breaking point, that's why we didn't finish off the rest of the second floor. So just for your conversation earlier of 1988 prices, to where we are now, we built Station 2 for 7 million.
That was here.
And a tap the size.
Dive right in.
So we've got a couple items on capital for next year. One of them is a mini pumper, which is $350,000. We had presented this to this board last year with the hope of getting a grant to pay for it. And at that time, we were hopeful, and we did approve, and we did approve at town meeting for the match, but the grant was not approved by the feds. So we're back with this request. This mini pumper is a smaller version of what we currently use for fire trucks. It would allow us to get into areas that are tighter, have, are a little bit more restrictive when it comes to some of these larger apparatus that we have. It would be replacing a 2005 F-250 forestry unit that has certainly some wear and tear on it. But the idea for us is that the utilitarian portion of this mini pumper would allow us to replace a forestry truck, but also allow us to get into areas that the Quint, that large ladder truck that was approved, as well as our regular fire trucks can't get into. So that is the request for next year.
You know, the, what the mini pumper does is it's basically of, it has more capability than the forestry truck. So the forestry truck just has a small 120-gallon minute pump on it, can only flow a little bit of water, this is just like a regular fire truck, just in a smaller chassis. We also got rid of, and part of just keeping an eye on the fleet, the military truck that Chief Clark and I had converted over into a forestry unit with the skid that we got from MASH, we surplus that back to the state, it was a state truck, and I believe Marion, Tana Marion, I forget, the boat went to Marion or Matapoiset, I don't know. Marion or Matapoiset took that, and it's still in service up there. So we did drop the fleet size already, and we're, hopefully today, we got rid of the engine that we were supposed to get rid of with a Quint, and the ladder's gone to Quincy. So we're keeping an eye on the fleet, trying to keep it smaller, but this would kind of replace two trucks with one that was way more capable, and also given us that four-wheel drive capability for smaller areas.
Questions, Julie?
I don't have any questions, I think it's a great idea.
Mary?
No, we talked about it, like you said, last year, and we're hopeful of grant funding, so I'm good with the concept.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a moment of show and tell, so that everybody in the public understands, it's important when we do these things. You introduced the Quint to us, we approved that a while ago, it was purchased, it got outfitted, it got delivered. What did it cost us sitting in your driveway, and what would it be today if we started today?
So just funny you have that, so we had this conversation because, as we were looking at capital, the current timeframe to build a fire truck right now, if we're building a full-size one, is 40 months. The fire truck that we have sitting at headquarters, not the Quint, the engine that we bought four years ago was $550,000 when we bought it, would be 900 to a million. The Quint, they just did a smaller version of the one that we have, that we purchased for 1.1, a little less, with equipment for 1.7. The same company, basically the same truck, just a little bit different specification. So prices are through the roof, and build time's through the roof, and that's something we're going to have to consider. We plan these trucks on a 20-year replacement. We're not going, it's going to take three years, we can't order it in '20, we need to order it in like '17 to get it on time. There is no relief in sight from the manufacturers, this is, this is the future going forward.
Just wanted to get that on the record, so the public understands it's not easy to say, why don't we wait a year or two?
And this, this mini pumper actually gives us a little bit of breathing room, too, because it gives us some capability, which will kind of extend the life of the other trucks, so that while we're in that build period down the road, we're looking at, I think, 27 or 28 for the next full-size truck. Gives us a little breathing room of having some capability.
Thank you.
Larry?
Nothing more, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to touch on the memo and the dive gear, is that be a this year request?
That would be FY 24, too, Mr. Chairman. The dive gear, so originally I requested through a memo to Mr. Powers for...
through a memo to Mr. Powers for $15,809 for ballistic gear. And that was to put vests for our EMTs and paramedics on each ambulance to protect them in certain instances. We were able to procure that money through a grant. So, we started taking another direction with the money that we requested from Joe, which is to try to start moving forward with replacing some of our dive equipment that is well over 10 years old. So, that's where this fund money comes from, the $15,809 for FY '24. There will be another amount that will be requested in FY '25, which will be the balance and the remaining amount to replace this dive equipment. All the dive equipment is over 10 years old. Lifespan of dive equipment is between five and 10 everywhere that I've looked. And what we do is we repair a lot of equipment right now. And as we all know, we live in an area that we need to have capable equipment for our divers.
Do you think that it's, that we can wait until FY '25 for the balance and the order time to get this stuff?
It would be appropriate to order everything right now based on build times and product availability.
So, two things have happened with this. The original dive equipment came through state funding through SERPED, which is the, I'm going to forget the acronym, but it's the Southeastern Massachusetts Regional, it's basically federal grant money comes down to the state, state, and it's for terrorism's, you might know what SERPED stands for. I can't remember.
I wouldn't be watching that.
That, that. But it's, a lot of it is.
I'm not going to make him repeat that. I'm not going to try either.
But, so the original, when they did the county dive team, they bought all the equipment at once. And it's been recycled through divers. So, a lot of our guys now are wearing somebody else's gear that was originally bought for them that's been made to fit. We've also been blessed with, as we've added people to the department, a lot more interest in the dive team. So, we're currently fielded eight, eight divers now?
Ten.
We have 10 people in Harwich that are in some level of training to be full divers. My goal would be, because that gives us the best response if something happens in town. So, yeah, if we could buy it all now, then we would be able to outfit all 10 with new equipment and not rely on another SERPED grant or some other source to get this done.
We have 15,000 if this gets approved. Go ahead.
The total replacement is $36,580.
That's still not a capital amount.
It's under $50,000. So, Joe, we could address this through budget?
So, that would be the other way to do it. The concern generally is always if you have capital equipment items of this nature, and you put it in the operating budget, and there are financial difficulties, it's the first line to get cut.
Well, I don't mind the two-thirds vote because I think the public will see the benefit to it.
Yeah, I like that.
However, I don't see the point of waiting a year if we're patching diving equipment for a dive team. My own sense.
I'd rather see it in the budget and get it moving.
So, we'll future conversation on where we're going to put that.
There's certainly no objection at the capital outlay or my level for the equipment. And so, the timing of it is immaterial to us. It's whatever supports the needs.
And you'd rather not wait a year?
Yeah, I have my choice, yeah.
Thank you. Anything further?
I'm trying to understand. The capital budget automatically pushes into the next fiscal year. We can't get it now.
I think we can do anything we want as long as we put an article on the town meeting floor, and they vote it by two-thirds.
Okay. This is important. I'm comfortable with the two-thirds if it guarantees it happens.
So, hypothetical question.
Really?
Can we put an article on the town meeting warrant if it's not a capital item that just spends free cash? I mean, does it necessarily have to go into the operating budget side of it, or could we just have an article to fund 36,000? And I'm just asking, because I don't know.
Great question.
That's what I was thinking. If it's less than 50, and we put it as a separate article with a funding source, free cash, as soon as they approve it, they can order it.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for staying so late.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just put out there as representatives from our police department come forward, and gentlemen, this is just stalling for you to walk up to the table. You will see that under police department, there is no reference to police vehicles, cruisers, if you will.
I was going to bring that up.
So, I think that Chief and I can speak to the fact that two cycles ago, it was in the capital budget. It was determined then last year that it should be the operating budget. So, at this point, the cruisers would be contained in the fiscal year '24 operating budget request of the department.
Okay. Thank you. Chief or Deputy Chief, dive right in.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Dave Gummatt, Chief of Police, with me as my Deputy Chief, Kevin Konstantin. And I'd just like to go on record by saying we're coming before you, asking for much less than the Fire Department.
Which has less than the Water Department.
You're under everybody, but I'm hearing you snuck it into your budget. But go ahead.
All right. So, for FY '24, that you see, I hope you're looking at the same sheet I am, but it says under equipment replacement, $51,000. That number represents two things. It's the $42,000, $43,000 first payment on a three-year project to replace tasers. And it's a roughly an $8,000 figure to replace Level Four, what I refer to as rifle plates. It's not soft body armor. It's hard body armor designed to stop high-velocity rifle rounds. We have a set in each cruiser in the event that we have to go into a high-risk active shooter situation that's put on over the soft body armor. And the $20,000 figure under technology replacement is the IT upgrade for the Emergency Operations Center, and also known as our training room, which is sadly outdated. Deputy Chief Konstantin did a lot of work on that. We presented it at the capital outlay committee. We originally had it on for FY '25, and they thought it was a priority and moved it up to FY '24.
Thank you, Chief. Larry?
Well, thank you. Obviously, needed equipment. Let me just ask, have you discussed the IT request with our new IT director to be sure that there's incompatibility issues in terms of information flowing back and forth?
Yes. This upgrade would be strictly to that room. You'd be able to do video conferencing similar to this, but it has nothing to do with fiber or building the building. It's strictly for that room.
So, there's no communication links or sharing of any information at all?
Short of web conferencing, that will upgrade that.
I still feel more comfortable we had just a brief discussion and be sure there's any, you know, positive outcome to be on the same page, pay off. Hate to pass it on and find out you can't do something because you didn't. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could object on that one. That discussion occurred at the administration level. So, Sarah and I talked about that while they were building it. I wanted her to contemplate everything that would go into information technology. And it was her recommendation that that, because it's a standalone, because it's the Emergency Operations Center, that it would not be part of hers, but it's compatible with the things that she's doing that they would access in the.
So, the key word is compatible.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Don?
No, I'm good.
Mary?
I'm good. You're a bargain. You waited all this time, and you're a bargain.
That's why they came this time.
Yeah, I'm fine too. It's great. Thank you.
Joe, can you explain why the cruisers and how many are in the operating budget, not in the capital plan?
I can, not only because I haven't reviewed operating budget, but I think these folks could tell us generally where they're coming from on that request.
Be looking at three this year.
Okay. And why the, I'm looking at you. Why the, they can answer, but why operating and not capital? Conversation we had last year was they're capital items. They should be in capital.
So, my recollection was that it was a different conversation last year, but I can go over the notes. I think what's happened over the years, and Chief, I'm looking for a lifeline here, that there's been discussion between capital and operating. So, for me, as we're going to talk with charter, excuse me, with the Bylaw Charter Review Committee on charter changes, and I'm hoping that we build a capital plan that matches what the Division of Local Services says, you'll see that cruisers would be added going forward because they have a durable life that exceeds the five-year plan at the minimum, and that the dollar threshold is lower. So, right now, it's a policy decision and/or a philosophy. It can be put in the capital. It can be put in operating. The town has done, to my understanding over the last three years, has done each interchangeably.
Thank you, Joe. Larry?
Yeah, I can explain that some, and probably not in a way that does great service to the board's selectmen in years past. But the discussion primarily between capital and operating was, there's a feeling amongst some of the board members at the time, that it was better to put in operation, basically to force people to keep the budget under control, rather than capital outlay was be outside of their normal operating budget. So, in some ways, it's almost a penalty to be sure that it was, trying to put a hammer on the police department to keep the number of cruisers limited. There was some feeling there were too many cars in the parking lot, too many cruisers. And so, that was behind it. I don't think it was, I didn't think it was right then. I don't think it's right now. I think capital makes something more sense, but that was the reason behind it, of forcing it into operations.
Mary?
I thought it was a math thing, that if it was over 50, it was capital, and if it was under 50, it wasn't.
But the board contravened that.
But the board contravened it for reasons that it just said.
Well, it's over 50 now.
They are over 50 now?
I wasn't on that.
Well, and to Don's point, free cash isn't free. And to Norrie's point, we have seven and a half million. And building it into the budget is built into the budget. Paying for them when we have the money is not borrowing the money. We're buying the cruisers. Therefore, for me, paying for it out of capital makes a heck of a lot more sense than putting it into an operating budget. But we'll have that conversation. If you don't want to have it now, we'll have that conversation at budget time. And I hope one doesn't overlap the other in case I prevail.
I just assume that meeting weekly, we'll be talking about budget for the next 118 days and however many weeks that turns out to be.
Wouldn't you rather have the extra time, though, knowing where we were going? I don't think there's anybody that's going to disagree with Michael.
No, I agree with that. I was just trying to comment. It's an amendment to the capital outlay plan. It hasn't been reviewed by the capital outlay committee, but six, one half dozen of another. They're all going to be articles. So, what's the will of the board?
Well, and they're police cruisers, and these gentlemen are going to demonstrate that we need them. So, I don't understand, I don't think personally, town meeting's going to say we don't need police cruisers, although I could be wrong.
Killed a fire truck in his car once.
To the microphone, Mr. Chairman.
He doesn't want to be there.
I'm not going to call him up. Our chief said something.
Inaudible chatter.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Mary?
One question. Do you expect the same delay in trying to get cruisers that Chief for Blank spoke of?
I expect 55,000 to 60,000 fully done.
Yeah.
And I would expect, I expected the two we're building right now, three we're building right now, two of which are marked. I expected some delay. There's a little delay. I was able to get them off the lot. Next year is going to be a huge delay. Yes.
Chips.
Yes.
And you pay upfront, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Ending with any and all requests on capital plan. I don't think we need to go in any further on capital since we don't have any department heads here. Is there a, Joe, looking at voting to support or not voting to support? Do you want to get into any of that tonight, or are we going to just do that as part of the overall picture?
At this point, I would say it would be, I think, better to do it as the overall. These conversations are helping refine the plan, which will help refine the articles that you're going to go over. Again, every article requires your input and vote, and so I think it's cleaner to just conclude it at that point.
I'll just make the statement, other than Dan Pelletier, I'm not sure that we need any of these department heads to come back and go over 2024. Do we, just to give them a breath of fresh air? They don't have to sit through these.
It's all geeky government stuff.
Dan clearly is going to be back, but I think the rest of the attendance is not going to happen. Norrie?
Hi. So, sorry you said it was disingenuous to say you support something and then criticize something. Unfortunately, my nature is such that even if I love something, I have to critique it. So, you can put your judgment on it as you like, Michael.
Thank you.
All right. But what I do want to say is that, you know, I really want to see the boiler and the beginnings get done in the, I'm just going to call it the Cultural Center. I'm old. It's been kicked around on the capital plan back and forth for like five years. First, it was five years out this way, then up front and back. But the reason I'm speaking is I'm disappointed if it doesn't have attached to it a Green Communities grant amount. When I noticed it, I spent a little time looking at the backup sheets and looking at the Green Communities Act on the DOR website. And I mean, boilers are like, if you look at the last few years, boilers are like the number one thing they want to pay for, you know? So, I don't know what to do about it.
Joe, we discussed green communities in that, at a previous meeting. Is our intent, or Sean's intent, to work with green communities, work within those guidelines on that boiler, correct?
I think the perhaps stronger statement to make is that it is the policy of the Town of Harwich through the Public Works Department, Administration, and the board, that our Facilities Maintenance Manager work with the Green Communities program anytime he's operating on our buildings. So, it's always his mindset to avail himself of those programs and responsibilities.
Thank you, Joe. Mary?
Well, if that means that we're going to have a lower amount come May and have green communities attached, then I'm perfectly fine. And I'm sure that would be allowed for the fire alarm system as well. I looked at, you know, 30 pages of money's giving out to, you know, tiny towns. Certainly wouldn't pay for the whole thing. The average grant seemed to be about $200,000, $200,000, $300,000, very much like what we got for the Community Center last year and for the library in FY '18. So, I'll look forward to seeing the results.
Thank you. And Norrie, just to clarify my statement, it wasn't in general.
Okay.
Because I like people that critique things.
All right.
The critiquing that's going on from the Finance Committee in the packet is all the information, and their last meeting speaks for itself, is a bit over the top.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Contracts, motion? Oh, let's hash out this police cruiser thing if the boards, if the boards want. Go ahead, Norrie.
You know, I haven't been here since August.
In town?
Okay. So, this comment is purely about aesthetics, and it is in no way related to any buildings on Sisson Road. All right? For me, this section of the capital plan with all the addresses, I'm an older person. I find it very off-putting and very confusing. It's just an aesthetic comment. You can do what you like. But when I look at this at my age, in font three, and see a list of 12 addresses, I don't see what it adds to it. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Norrie. Police cruisers. Don?
I just want to add to her. Speaking on behalf of the 752, I definitely agree to you, with you. Speaking on behalf of the tenants of the 752, I definitely agree with you.
Do we want to take up the police cruisers on capital tonight, or do you, I feel like we need the town administrator to have some time to work on this, if that's the direction we're going.
For me, it's simple. I'd like to do capital, and we can move it ahead on schedule that fits their needs.
Julie?
It's normally capital, but I'm trying to remember what conversation happened because I kind of do remember the discussion about moving it to the budget. So, I know it's normally capital, but.
It's been all over the place. Last year, it was moved out of it for an article for free cash. That's what last year's direction was. Before, the year before that, it was in capital, and it used to be lumped into town vehicles, water, fire, police. That's where it struggled sometimes. So, it wasn't separate. It should be separate.
Yeah, that's what I kind of recall.
Mary?
I thought the time that it got moved to expense was that it was under 50. But now it's over 50, so I don't see any reason to keep it in expense.
Well, I just think when we're looking at budgets, obviously, every year, we're looking at budgets and giving you a percentage. And to me, it makes sense. Obviously, that's going to be $160,000 kick into your budget. And to the point that everyone's made on free cash is we actually have the money. And to Don's point about giving some of the money back, this is paying for something rather than have it be a budget item. If we ever get our free cash under control and have what we traditionally have, then it would be a different conversation. Chief?
Chief for Blank, just a little more recollection on that. There was a thought process, and you may remember this, that it was, they're always going to need police cruisers every year, so you just put them in the operating budget. And then, while it's that first year, it's a big hit, then every year, you're just replacing them versus going out to a separate boat and potentially. them versus going out to a, a separate boat and potentially getting voted down. I remember that being as part of the conversation as well.
Yeah. Norine?
The other part of the conversation, which happens in almost every town, is that cruisers are almost considered disposable because even though you can say the life of the vehicle is seven years or whatever, by three years, they're burnt up, you know? And so that's really what it was. It wasn't something that you're investing in, in a capital item that you're gonna have a lengthy period of use about. That's why many towns do put it in the budget. They're really disposable objects, even though they happen to be vehicles.
Board, do I make any decisions tonight or bring this one back for the recommendation?
I don't know any more information's gonna help us.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think we need to decide. I'd like to move that we move this to the capital plan.
Second.
Moved in second to move this, the police cruisers to the capital plan and out of the budget. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Contract, motion for the contract?
Oh, go ahead.
I move that we vote to approve a per diem employment contract with Robert Lawton for interim treasurer collector services.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna vote for it, but I'd just like to make a pitch. The last two appointments got put into a packet. In the past, we've gotten like a blind copy that I intend put on an agenda, an appointment of so-and-so at the next meeting. I, I'd sure like to get a heads up before the public sees it because I, people saw it before, I did and called me and said, so I see your, and I'm like, well, it's the first I'm hearing of it. I just, just as a matter of where we go from here, I would love to be able, we, we used to do that. Just drop us a line that at the next meeting, I intend to do the following. That's not a deliberation. And then we know about it ahead of when it's actually posted on an agenda that gets, that gets put on our internet site. Again, I had no clue what people called.
So hiring a per diem employee, you want to be a?
If it's something we have to approve, I'd like to be able to have a heads up that going into the meeting, I'm gonna put that on the agenda.
But only related to, I'm just.
If we don't have to approve it, then it's, I don't care.
Only related to a, like human though, because contracts, we never send out anything.
No.
Only related to a human?
Yes.
Okay. Mary?
But it was on our agenda.
Thursday.
A week ago.
Thursday.
Thursday, whenever it was.
But it went to the public before we even knew it was going to be happening. That's all I'm saying, is in terms of information.
We, I guess I just don't.
We did it with the town planner too. I mean, it was just put into a packet. I would have liked to have had some heads up because I was wholly unaware of that happening until it was too late to come in, except on Monday. I'd just, I'd just like to get an advance notice. There's nothing insidious about it. It's just, in the past, we've complained that things hit the newspaper before we knew them, so.
Well, we technically would have got this the same time. And as far as I'm concerned, this is a management decision and something that we shouldn't have to approve anyway. But that's only my, my opinion, so.
But we are.
Okay, well, we'll figure that out. Town administrators report?
You haven't voted.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Five, five, zero. And town administrators report?
Thank you. So two quick updates, pleased with both, obviously.